Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting and thank you for coming this morning. We'll just introduce ourselves to you and then ask our legal adviser to outline the procedure for this morning. My name is Abdul Qayyum, councillor for Firth Park Ward in Sheffield and I'm chair of this licensing subcommittee.
Councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Baiton.
Roger.
If you just know, well, we're going to bring you up to the mic to speak, so if you just press the button on the left, it'll bring it on. That way the webcast cameras can attach to the person that's speaking and, as councillor Davison said, so we can all hear each other because it's not the best room acoustically. And obviously, if you have any difficulties, just shout up and we'll come and help you. So I'm Samantha Bond, I'm the legal adviser to the committee this morning. Good morning.
Shimmer.
Good morning. Shimmerla Finch, I'm from the Licensing Service and I'll be presenting the report today.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Cooper from Democratic Services.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, you've just want to outline what's happened this morning, please, Sam.
Yeah, do we want to go around everyone or are we just going to introduce as and when people are speaking? Is that easier?
If people just introduce themselves when they come to speak.
As you come to speak, yeah. So before you come and give your representation, if you could give your name as well, that'd be really helpful, thank you. So can I just check, has everybody had a copy of the papers and can see a copy of the papers if they want to? We have got a couple of spares extra. So the hearing procedures, right at the back of the papers, on page 86, I'll just run through it, it looks a lot worse than it is, hopefully. So the licensing officer, Shimmerla this morning, will introduce the report. If there are any questions on the report, that can be asked by members and the applicant, so if there's anything missing or factually inaccurate, we'll get it cleared up and amended for the minutes there. We'll then turn over to the representatives for the responsible authorities and interested parties, who'll be asked to detail their relevant representations. So to expand on what's been written and submitted in the report, members and officers will have an opportunity for questions and with the leave of the chair, the applicant may ask the interested parties' questions as well. So we'll just have a little bit of a general discussion. We'll then hand over to the applicant and their representative to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and to respond to the representations made, both written in the report and spoken this morning by people present. Again, members and officers can ask questions of the applicant and with the leave of the chair, interested parties can also ask the applicant and their representative questions as well. The applicant will be given the opportunity to sort out the application and then will take the options as detailed in the report from Shimmerla, the licensing officer. At that point, we'll go into a private session, so I'll ask you all to pile back out of the room while members take legal advice and come to a decision, which we'll probably give you today, depending sort of how long speaking takes this morning and how long we think the decision will take this morning or this afternoon, but we'll let you know at that point. The decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Gambling Act 2005 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that either in open session, as we are now, or closed session, where I think it'll probably be easier if we all nip out and have a chat and we'll come back in and feedback what that legal advice was and the conclusion that we've come to. So the hearing is in public this morning and it is being live webcast, hence the need for the use of the microphones as well. And so the committee will be held in public, as I've just said, and in accordance with the regulations, unless the committee determine that the public should be excluded. I don't think we've had any issues raised with that so far. Hopefully that's relatively straightforward and I'll now stop talking and hand over to you guys. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Shimmerla.
Thank you, Chair. This report is to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence for an adult gaming centre made under the Gambling Act 2005. Paragraph two of the report outlines the gambling framework and details a regulation about adult gaming centres with links to the Commission's codes of practice, guidance to local authorities and the Licence and Authority Statement of Principles. This paragraph also details the local requirements in relation to the applicant's risk assessments. The application has been made by Mr Yasuf, which was received on the 16th of August 2023. Copy of the application documents, which include the risk assessment, are attached to Appendix A. During the application period, we received eight representations, one from a responsible authority and the remaining from interested parties. Full copies are attached at Appendix B. Comments were also received from the planning department, these are attached to Appendix C. The main points of the representations are highlighted in paragraph 4.3 of the report. Examples include issues of crime and disorder, vulnerable persons in the area, risks around the location of the premises including demographics, deprivation, the close proximity of premises to sensitive buildings and locations and the exposure it has to vulnerable persons, in particular where the congregation points where people are suffering from mental health issues and drug and alcohol addiction. This is around McDonald's, Cathedral Grounds, the Archer Project. A list and plan have been mapped out for members to view premises that may fall within those listed in part five of our policy, along with information relating to the area as described under the same part. This is attached at Appendix D of the report. Since the publication of the report, the applicant's legal representatives have proposed conditions to the licence, if granted, to alleviate concerns for those who have made representations. These were sent prior to the Licensing Authority, Public Health and South Yorkshire Police at their request. They have not been agreed, although I think there are some changes with South Yorkshire Police. And there's a list of 22 conditions attached to the applicant's bundle at pages 91 to 92. Members will also note that the applicant has submitted an updated local risk assessment in their bundle at pages 74 to 85. The applicant and those who have made representations have been invited to send the hearing. Copies of the notices are attached to Appendix E. Paragraph five of the report details our policy, strategies and plans for consideration. There are no specific financial implications arising from this application, however additional costs may be incurred if the matter goes to appeal. The legal position determining applications is detailed in paragraph seven and it's recommended that members carefully consider the representations made in accordance with the legislation, codes of practice, guidance to local authorities and the Licence and Authority Statement of Principles. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Before we move further, is there any questions to the licensing officer on this report so far? Okay. First representation.
So we have, so we're just going to go by number order within the report, which is Public Health. Thank you.
Thanks, Shimmerla. Thanks, Chair. So I'm Greg Felth, director of Public Health and first up in terms of the objectors. If I briefly sum up the rationale for my objection and then a few introductory points and then later on in the conversation, happy to answer any questions, is that okay? Cool. First up, I'll say, right at the outset, I'm not anti-gambling, I'm anti-harm from gambling. Part of my job is to protect the public from avoidable risk to health and wellbeing and gambling harm is a very real thing, it's something that we significantly under address in Sheffield and every other city in the country. Framing of this is really important, none of this is about individuals that don't display sufficient personal responsibility, this is all about a highly addictive product and the way it's marketed and the harm that comes from the use of that product. The framing is really, really, really important to me. The main objections were threefold. One, people most negatively affected by this and other premises will include children, young people and vulnerable people and I'll stress the vulnerable people a little bit more in a second. People in treatment for gambling-related harms, most obviously, and of note, the new NHS gambling treatment centre is not too far away from where this proposal, where this proposed adult gaming centre is. Secondly, if granted, the licence would lead to an increase in gambling activity within an already high-risk area. We know there are a significant number of students there, some of whom will be at risk of harm. We know there's a significant homeless population, we know there's a significant services that provide care and support to those with mental health problems. And third main objection is that there's already a high concentration of similar premises in the immediate vicinity and that was set out. Bottom of page four of the representation I put in set out some of the issues with regard to vulnerable people, vulnerable populations. I should talk a little bit about harm. We have local data, we did some work in Sheffield four or five years ago now, the numbers may have changed a bit, the story won't have changed a great deal. Somewhere in the order of 8,000 people are significantly, have significant problems with related to gambling and 23,000 to 27,000 people are at significant risk of gambling harm, that's clustered along the ways that you would normally expect it to be. Up to 10% of suicides are gambling-related. And of note, Mr Urpputh, who was a Sheffield coroner, held a judgment on the Jack Ritchie case. Jack started his gambling career on fixed odd betting terminals whilst he was at sixth form. It's illegal to gamble before you're 18. And a more recent case was the case of Luke Ashton, who was a Leicester young man who died, was the first suicide where gambling addiction was recorded on the medical cause of death. The coroner also concluded that most gambling suicides are not recorded, so 10% may well be underestimated. There's significant financial harm, use of gambling commission, gambling commission's data would suggest that 31 million is lost from Sheffield residents to land-based gambling in any given year. Again, that clusters along the usual lines and it's important to stress, 31 million pounds is a lot of money in a cost of living crisis for many people who can't afford to, can't afford that and harmed others. We can all cite examples of families ripped apart by gambling addiction, addiction is very, 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 very hard to quantify. Lots is made of, this is all about the tiny minority, the tip of the spear, the people who, the 0.3% who are actively harmed, the betting industry tell us that regularly, it's misguided on at least five counts and that shall explain why, if questioned, I won't dwell on that now for a time. Location matters, as I've said, there are a number of sensitive locations or services that provide care to vulnerable groups in the immediate vicinity, the Archer Project is fairly close by, the substance misuse treatment service is fairly close by, the new NHS gambling addiction service is fairly close by and there are significant number of student flats very, very close by and significant numbers of those students may well be at risk of gambling harm. So location does matter in terms of the judgement around vulnerability. Of course, licensing policy matters, I'm not a licensing lawyer, so I won't pretend, I won't pretend to be the expert in that matter. The permissive environment, the seek-to-permit issue is a thing, it's not a duty, it's not a duty on local authorities that you must give permission to new applicants and it's not absolute, it's all about how it's interpreted, clearly that's your judgement, not my judgement to make. The key question is, is this application within the current policy, given all of the issues at stake that I will set out or I will set out and others will also set out? Obviously, all operators will say, we're a responsible operator, we will follow the rules, very good to hear. Much is made in statements around systems to identify harm and make help available to people who are being harmed. I had a brief conversation with the NHS clinician who runs the NHS Northern Gambling Service just around the corner from this premises a week or so ago, he was pretty clear, any NHS clinician will tell you it's very, very difficult to identify those at risk of harm if they wish it to be concealed. And so whilst lots of people will say, we can identify people and we'll spot and look out for them and we'll make sure that those people are rooted to help, actually in practice that doesn't work terribly well, according to the views of most NHS clinicians, that Dr Gaskell would be able to, Dr Gaskell would be able to say. Safeguards will be in place, I have no doubt about that. Of course, lived experience and some evidence would suggest that the conditions of licence are frequently breached, we can't say that about this applicant, obviously, because it hasn't been granted yet, but the Gambling Commission bulletins are frequently cited, examples of where conditions of licences were breached. Even if the rules are followed, people will come to harm. I can't predict when, where or how, but people will still come to harm and the lived experience of those that run NHS centres will tell you that day in, day out. Those families who, those families who are breed by suicide will also tell you that. Of course, it's all about vulnerability, I've got to be careful here, the problem is the product, not the individual, the flawed individual that didn't display the right level of responsibility, but people are vulnerable and we need to be clear on that one. We know that anyone can become addicted, young people possibly more vulnerable psychologically, that's clearly the experience of NHS clinicians, it's also the experience of lived experience charities, one of whom is based in Sheffield. So thus the vulnerable thing does matter and obviously that takes you to the third aim of the Licensing Act, third objective of the Licensing Act and the original submission we made, made some, made some points on that. The Gambling Commission's own data suggests that somewhere in the order of 46% of the population displays some vulnerability and that varies over time, varies by different characteristics and varies over time. So it's not, it's not a tiny proportion of the population, it's near on half of the population might display vulnerability to being harmed by gambling use. The Gambling Commission guidance expects everyone's gambling activity to be monitored 365 days a year when the centre, when centres are open, if it's online, for 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. That doesn't work in practice and there's plenty of lived experience evidence that would suggest that that just doesn't work in practice. I can't define in advance who would be vulnerable to suicide, who would be vulnerable to gambling addiction, just as I can't define in advance who will get lung cancer from smoking, it's impossible. Some people who smoke will live to 95, others will die of age 65 of lung cancer or heart disease or whatever. So I can give you an epidemiological estimate that some people will come to harm from gambling addiction, but I can't in advance define who, but there's a fairly large proportion of the population who would be vulnerable. Rereading the Bud Report from more than a decade ago, on, which was a review of the Gambling Act at the time, it was pretty clear that the third licensing objective with respect to the Gambling Act was, extends beyond the narrow meaning of the safeguarding definition of vulnerable, it's a much, much, much broader. So clearly is about vulnerability and I'll repeat again that most expert clinicians will tell you that the machines impact, the machines in use in adult gaming centres can impact everyone, they're very, very addictive machines and there's plenty of, plenty of research on the propensity to be addicted really quite quickly. So our community are pretty clear on this, we've done some work towards a Sheffield gambling harm reduction strategy, we hope that will be agreed by the council in the not too distant future. When we did that work a year or so ago, the stakeholders to that were very, very clear, Sheffield must do better with respect to gambling harm reduction. Our communities have been asking us to be, take a stronger line on gambling harm for quite some time and most of the adult polling, most of the polling would support pretty strong regulation of gambling industry. There was some YouGov research that was published relatively recently that showed that bookies were the least popular establishment to have on the high street. Clearly that isn't a material impact for licensing, but it is a real-world impact all the same. So just by way of sum up for me, framing matters, this is all about exposure to a highly addictive product, the more we expose people to a highly addictive product, the more people will gamble, some of those will come to harm. Significant numbers of vulnerable people in and around the vicinity of the proposed location, the vulnerable group is really quite a large group, it's not the 0.3% of the population that the gambling industry frequently tell us about, it's a much, much larger group and it's fluid and it changes, changes over time. With all of that, I've remained with my objection to the applicant's proposal for a licence largely on grounds of vulnerability. It isn't going to help, there will be some harm and even if, even if the rules are followed, there will be some harm. I can't predict who, when or how, but there will be harm and I'll stop there, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. If you could just, maybe I have some questions. So I'm going to ask my colleagues first if there's any questions from anyone.
Sorry. The figures that you're quoting, where have you got them from?
Councillor Davison, which figure and I'll try and remember.
Well, sorry. Obviously, you're quoting a lot of figures, one is the suicide rate and one is about the vulnerability of people. It does seem pretty obvious that that might be the case, but what I want to know is where the figures come from so that we've got the, you know, substantive.
Thanks, councillor Davison. So the suicide, the best estimate was from the Public Health England, now OHED, report on impact of gambling harm, which was published in 2020, updated in 2022, I think. I can supply the committee with the precise web references. So it's impossible to be exact because of the underreporting and under-recording, that may change over time, but the best estimates from both coroner systems and from mental health services, it's in the order of 10%. And the vulnerability figures, some taken from the said same PhD report, some taken from the Gambling Commission's own data, which was referenced in a BMJ article in 2022 and again, I can supply the references if that would help.
Do you know what the figures are for the Gamblers Anonymous organisation is and whether it's growing or what is the situation?
Honest answer is I don't know, I don't know the numbers in treatment for, with Gamblers Anonymous. The NHS gambling, the NHS gambling, Northern Gambling Service, which has just opened in Sheffield, they're too new to have numbers in treatment. I do have, and I don't have it to hand, but numbers in, numbers in treatment with Gamble Aware funded treatment providers and of note, Gamble Aware historically has been funded by the gambling industry, they're, they say they're independent now. I don't have to hand the numbers of treatment, but I know that they're growing and I do know the significant unmet need.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the applicant representative? Yes.
Sir, are you of the view the existing gambling establishments in Sheffield are not meeting the licensing objectives?
I'm not able to answer, sorry, I'm not able to answer because I'm not close enough to how the licensing objectives are and aren't being monitored.
I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions, I think I can ask you to step down, Greg. Thank you very much. Can we call the next party, please, Shimmerla?
Next one in the report is South Yorkshire Police.
Good morning, I'm Emily Price, I'm a solicitor from South Yorkshire Police Legal Services. In terms of the position of South Yorkshire Police, we did originally object to a premises licence in respect of nine Fargate on the basis that the premises located within a main city centre hotspot for violence and antisocial behaviour. There are a number of adult gaming centres in the nearby vicinity which often bring about issues of violence, damage and antisocial behaviour. The concerns raised by the police in respect of the licensing objectives being in particular the objective of preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder or being associated with crime or disorder. Having considered the applicant's submissions, however, submitted last week, I think it has to be conceded that the applicant is an experienced and conscientious operator and as a result of that, South Yorkshire Police have engaged in discussions with his representatives, agreed a further four conditions to be added to the licence and on that basis, South Yorkshire Police seek to withdraw their objection.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members?
Sorry, there we go. Can I just ask what the conditions are around, please?
I can read them out if that, if that's.
If that's all right, yeah, thank you.
The conditions are, number one, to acquire a suitable number of radio sets for the premises to take part in the city centre retails against crime and to keep those radios in use at all times when trading. Secondly, to have an ID scanner for entry into the premises, subject to a number of specifications such as the scanning speed, online support, training to be issued to staff in their use and so on. Thirdly, to have a designated trained member of staff for child sexual exploitation awareness and drugs awareness. And fourthly, to have operational hours between 8am and half past midnight only.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Davison.
Sorry, when people enter the premises, are they checked at the door?
That's the idea, yes, councillor, that's how the scanner would work, they would submit some form of identification on entry.
Okay, thank you. Any further inquiries, questions, please? No. Okay, thank you very much, Chair, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, please.
We have the Green Party City Ward councillors.
Morning there. So, you know, I'm Douglas Johnson, I'm one of the councillors for City Ward, so you've got our objection there at page 35 of the main pack of papers. So three ward councillors, Ruth Mercerow, Martin Phipps and me, Douglas Johnson, and it's a joint objection because we all know what goes on in our ward right in the city centre, we've all been down the bottom of Fargate and that's why we're setting out our concerns about the likely impact of this and what we think will happen if this gambling centre opens. Naturally, as ward councillors, we're actually really concerned about the level of continual antisocial behaviour that's round there, round the bottom of McDonald's, you know, all the time and as you'll know that it is, you know, the centre of concern for the discussions where there is a huge number of people across the council who, and police and other agencies who are, you know, very much concerned with this and, you know, it's why the council's considering powers about PSPL. We know from experience, you know, all the impacts coming from other gambling premises that have been round the city centre and frankly have blighted the Castle Gate area, around Haymarket, Fitzalan Square, et cetera. But just wanted to draw up the fact that these problems are being dealt with by a huge number of agencies that are under pressure and frankly, we're putting this objection because we don't want to add to those pressures. Those services, you know, are under the banner of the Help Us Help initiative, which we're familiar with. There's, there's a lot of different council services in there, there's the police, you've got the neighbourhood police, responsive police, you've got the council's rough sleeper teams in there, you've got the drug and alcohol teams and then you've also got the voluntary sector as well, so the Archer Project, for instance, Ben's Centre, you know, they do huge amounts of work in supporting people and trying to keep people, you know, off the streets in a place where they're safe. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, what we loosely call the street cohort here, we're talking about, you know, a lot of very vulnerable people. It was mentioned, you have the soup kitchen, you have the street pastors, the PCSOs who do the rounds early in the morning. There's also the commission services that the director of Public Health has mentioned on dealing with mental health, drug and alcohol issues and the gambling treatment centre. And the fact that a new gambling treatment centre is due to open up in Sheffield is very welcome, but of course it shows, you know, the need for that live treatment, there are a number of people who are very seriously impacted by that. But as a, you've had that covered already, my main concern as a ward councillor is for the number of residents and here I have to say that the applicants have completely misunderstood the city that they're trying to expand their. misunderstood the city that they're trying to expand their business into. And I say that because the expert evidence that the applicant relies on is Daryl Butterworth. I don't know if Daryl's here. Daryl, warning. In your evidence, Daryl, you said you visited, you spent, I think, four hours there scouting the area quite properly. And you said there's no residential property located nearby. And as you'll know, it's just complete nonsense. The reference to that is on page 46 of the extra bundle. It's paragraph 65 where Daryl stated that. There's no residential property located nearby. And you know, it's just nonsense. There are a lot of people living in the city centre now. So just some to note. Chapel House on Fargate, it's number 13 Fargate. It's literally two doors away from this building. It's a new block converted from, there's about 80 flats in there, 80 separate households. The George Street High Street flats are all located almost directly above where these premises are. There's other flats actually on Fargate. The whole point about the work on Fargate now is to increase the number of residential living spaces in all the floors above the shops there. So it's not just the residencies now, but the fact that this whole area is, yeah, we were actually spending millions of pounds as a council to try and increase the amount of residential accommodation there. On East Parade, and I'm just listing the ones here that are more or less in a direct sideline of this building at the bottom of Fargate, the East Parade, there are flats on there. Across the way, the Star Residence, the Star Residence is the former offices of Sheffield Newspapers. It's turned into a very large student accommodation. 250 students can be accommodated in there. Telegraph House Office, again, flats. Just down the road, Watson's Chambers, you know, it's the one next to the Bankers' Draft, again, the sideline from this place. Mostly students in there, not all, some professional people do. There's 64 flats in there. I won't go further than that because those are the ones that are just in sort of, you know, immediate vicinity. But it completely debunks the applicant's case that it's not a residential area. It very much is. And of course, you've also got a residential population there that's going to be particularly vulnerable in the way that you've seen set out in the papers. So students, young people. And you've got to remember that those attracted to gambling aren't just those from deprived backgrounds. The risk of harm relates those from deprived backgrounds. But actually, you do have a lot of people here who are in a financially precarious situation, even though they might have money coming in. So, but in particular, students there. It's also relevant to, in terms of the policy that you're looking at, that you have to make a decision on, you count these sensitive premises, including education establishments. So you've got Hallam University that's right in the middle there. That's where a lot of these students go. And of course, I also should mention just the number of schoolchildren, including six formers that come through the city centre. So in particular, you're looking at all the kids who, you know, come in from, you know, to and from the schools on the west of the city but travel right across the city on two buses. Always therefore have to change in the city centre, typically, you know, coming off at Wayne Gate or something and getting on at the High Street. So there's, at the beginning and end of the day, there's a lot of young students going about there. And although, you know, it's said that, you know, it's only for over 18s and there'll be age checks, and I have no reason to doubt that, then that temptation to bring them in is going to be there. As well as the fact of, you know, the older people who are entitled to be in the gaming centre find, you know, these young people an easy source of prey for begging off and catching money and other things, which is the real core of the antisocial behaviour we're seeing there. We all know that the bottom of Fargate is a massive hotspot for antisocial behaviour. The police have told us it's a hotspot for violent crime. Yeah, and we know that. And you know that from living in Sheffield. But also, I mean, to its credit, you know, Daryl Butterworth has confirmed that. Robert Edge, we've got Robert Edge here? No, you're Robert, yeah. You've put your evidence in too and confirmed it's a hotspot for those things too. And looking at the other hotspots we used to have, so Fitzalan Square and Haymarket, there are still gambling establishments there, including Slot Machine Place, the other adult gaming centre. They're much the same. I know the applicant's case is that, you know, adult gaming centres are completely different from betting shops. In reality, what you see there is completely to the contrary. That whole area used to be particularly, it's still a bit bad, but it used to be particularly bad for, you know, people out there constantly begging money off people, stopping passersby, all that sort of aggressive begging that pizza bull in the council are looking to penalise through a PSPO, wherever that term comes to. That area has improved with the closure of some of those places. Fitzalan Square is actually looking quite nice now, whereas once it had four or five gambling establishments, it now doesn't. It's much, much better. It's, you know, been done over. It's got some nice cafes. It's become a bit more of a destination place. And that's the point. It's about the harm that gambling establishments cause in areas like this and the things that blight our city centre. This is highly relevant to the location policy, which is the key policy working to here. So it's not just my view that closing gambling places improves the area. I mean, we know that, you know, that's feedback from South Yorkshire Police. But again, Daryl Butterworth commented to you on the police evidence about the link between gambling premises and that. And Daryl says, "South Yorkshire Police do concede that several gambling premises in the area", referring to the ones down Haymarket, "have closed voluntarily and the situation has improved." And that's precisely our point. Close gambling places, the situation improves. Thank you, Daryl Butterworth. You know, conversely, if you open them, you'll expect a deteriorate. That reference, if you need it, is on page 48 of the applicant's extra bundle and at paragraph 76. So it is an important observation there that was put in. So the point about the policy, sort of stated of gambling principles includes the policy. Really important piece of the policy because the location of any gambling establishment is going to be really important. It lists, you know, a number of the things there. So 5.2, I mean, you know, at least half those bullet points are directly engaged. You know, this is a really inappropriate location for a gambling establishment. In terms of the applicant's own risk assessment, the initial risk assessment put in the pack tells me that however well they've been able to operate, or however luckily they've been able to operate in other centres where there's not so much footfall, where it's not such a contentious area, they're completely out of the depth, it seems to me, when addressing this one. The original application is so basic that it just doesn't engage with the issues and it just makes it look at that time, you assume that they'd never been down the bottom of Fargate. There is an updated and completely different risk assessment in the supplementary pack. It still doesn't get to the issues there. It simply doesn't address the issues of how you deal with antisocial behaviour and crime in Fargate and the consequent impact on people who live and work in that area and travel through it and go to school and go to university. And that's simply because you can't. There's just too much going on in that place. It's a hotspot for almost everything. And there's no way that, you know, as ward councillors, we'd really like to see that added to. The evidence of the applicant is that, and you see there's some quite detailed observations of both this set of premises and the other locations where the operator, you know, has other premises. And it's quite clear that Fargate is a far busier location. Again, Daryl Butterworth's evidence notes that this set of premises on Fargate is the busiest location compared to any of all the Mr Usus gaming empire. Again, that's page 47, paragraph 71. Also noting that Fargate suffers a higher rate of crime than the national average. That statement's on the, that's on page 46 of the applicant's extra bundle at paragraph 63. So what, as a ward councillor, what I'm asking you to do is look at the location policy at paragraph 5.2. Think about the bottom of Fargate when you're there and apply that. And you'll realise, yeah, it's really not the location for a gambling place. And in that context, you know, I would say that the applicant has not satisfied the authority that it's appropriate to open a gambling establishment there. And I should say, just to finish off, I mean, it's not a criticism of the way that they've run any other centres in Manchester, Leeds and Bradford. I don't know about them. I've no particular reason to criticise them. They may well be perfectly run, may well be fine inside. But the issue comes in the area outside the building, which they frankly don't have any control over. They won't have control over the people who are seeking to, you know, use that as magnet to hang around, to, you know, look for cash off people and contribute and enhance the problems that we see all the time all around that area. I think that's all I need to say. Obviously happy to take any questions. Sorry, I thought I put mine off.
I just have one question, if that's okay. In your capacity as a local councillor for this area, I'm just wondering if, obviously you've outlined quite extensively the general issues that you think are around in the area. Just wondering, in your sort of personal capacity as a local councillor for this area, if you can highlight any particular issues that you've come across personally, you know, either, you know, working with, in your day-to-day work with, you know, the sporting agencies that you mentioned, or even local residents or businesses that you think are exacerbated with the addition of this gaming centre?
Well, yeah, I mean, in addition to all the things I've just said, and the fact that we go through there all the time, you know, and you see that there are always, you know, people out there begging and, you know, begging for money. The money goes into, you know, buying alcohol. It goes into gambling. You know, we see this all the time. Yeah, we see the people who are asking us and, you know, the other residents of the city centre for money, you know, going in and out of the places that do offer gambling facilities, you know, certainly down Haymarket and Fitzalan Square when that was operating. We see, you know, students coming there. We see that at the time when the students returned to the city in September, there's a proliferation of people coming to sort of prey on a new set of young people who are ready to be, you know, parted with their cash. Before the students arrived back, we see, you know, people who come to beg, getting into possession, establishing their pitches because, you know, I mean, they're not stupid. Actually, they're quite skilled in marketing themselves and, you know, knowing how to get cash out of people. That's always exacerbated by, you know, being close to gambling premises. It's the draw of those places. Obviously, you know, everyone, you know, objectively would know that, you know, it's pretty pointless taking money in to gamble in any sort of betting places because that's how they make the profits. You're going to come out with, you know, less money than you went in with. But it's still a draw there, that the begging feeds into that. And the point is that, you know, you could say, well, you've got no sympathy for people who gamble, you know, what comes to them comes to them. But it's the continued impact on all the people who just want to walk past, get, you know, from their flat, you know, to the bus stop or to where they work or to the university and who are just being constantly, you know, harassed by people all around that area. In the evening, early evening and later on, you know, bottom of Fargate there, you've got continual people hanging around outside, you know, the McDonald's, you know, where you've got all the delivery drivers. I mean, it's pretty chaotic there. And then you've also got the much more sinister side of things like, you know, child sex exploitation. There's always quite a number of people who look suspiciously young to be out at, you know, that time in the evening. There's always some police out there, you know, and, you know, obviously, we know that the police are massively under pressure. You know, there's not enough police to be out there. But it's just continual complaints. And as ward councillors, and in fact as all councillors, we're constantly getting, what are you going to do about Fargate? You know, what are you going to do to clean drop it? You know, and coupled with, you know, I don't feel safe walking down there. It's all that atmosphere of, you know, a pretty forbidding and, you know, difficult area. And my point is that that's going to be added to by the addition of gambling premises.
Any questions, my colleagues?
I take it that because Fargate is a commercial centre and people who go to live there would know that it's a commercial centre. It's one of the, it was one of the most prosperous areas of Sheffield. Now, I take it that you're not against the businesses as such. It's this particular business. Is that the case?
So it's not this particular business, which I don't have any great knowledge of. And it's not about, you know, gambling shops per se. So we're focusing us on the location. I mean, I think we all know that gambling causes harm to, you know, a number of people, you know, with sort of 0.3 of the population. We heard about the number of suicides. We heard about the need for gambling.
I'm sorry, you're not answering my question. You're just repeating information that we've already been given.
Yep.
Sorry. Asking about whether your objection was to business in general down there or a particular business, in this case gambling?
No, so it's not, it's not a particular business. The objection is about the location. So, you know, not a criticism of this particular business one. Yeah. And if there's an application for opening a different centre in a different location, then you'll be a completely different migrant. The point is that, you know, this location isn't suitable for any gambling business in this particular building, that location bottom of Fargate. But also, to be fair, you said it's larger commercial area. And my point is, actually, no, it's not. I mean, as we all know, you know, the shops there, the big retail centre it once was, it's long gone. There's a lot of people living there. By contrast, you can't see them.
Sorry, you're still not answering the question?
Yeah.
Are you objecting to business in general doing that or are you objecting to a particular?
Oh, right. Do you mean the type of business rather than this? Yeah, okay, yeah. No. So that building used to have business in, yeah, it could be used for a lot of different businesses. And yeah, you obviously want to see businesses using that building, but it's available for wherever else. I mean, what I haven't said is about, you know, all the impacts on other businesses. But, you know, you'll take that as understood. Is that your question? Yeah.
Can I follow? Obviously, there are a lot of vulnerable people around that area. And one of the reasons is because we've got the Archer Project, not going to move the cathedral, and they do a great job in helping out Ben Centre. Actually, Ben Centre has moved away now. And that, I do know, has sorted some problems out with the dealers. But where you get vulnerable people, you actually get the drug dealers moving in. And so do you think that that would change drastically if this particular gambling establishment was located there?
So I don't know about the specifics of the drug dealers. Obviously, we don't know, you know, how they're moving in. You know, we can't speculate exactly how it's going to happen if this building opened. But, you know, you might assume that, you know, there's something. I mean, the drug dealing is a slightly different issue because that's about supplying people who, you know, will also beg and will also want to, you know, buy drugs of one sort or another. How much that's an overlap with the people who beg and then want to gamble or gamble and drink or whatever, don't know. Just the other thing is though that you mentioned Cathedral Project, Archer Project and Ben Centre, with hinting that they caused antisocial behaviour or drew it to the area. That's not the case. I mean, the cathedral is located where it is. The project was started up there because that's where people were in the centre of town. It's not that that caused it. They're part of the solution. And same with Ben Centre. It is part of the solution. You know, people are drinking on the streets all over the middle of town, you know, in particular around Fargate and High Street and that area. But then it's not because of Ben Centre. Ben Centre is doing a lot of the work to alleviate the harm to those people, but also to engage them so that they are less of a nuisance to the public passing through there. And same with the Archer Project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, what I was trying to find out was whether the situation of having this particular type of business would exacerbate the problem. I mean, we know about the drug dealer. There may be certain links between gambling, which you alluded to, you know, the links between people that need money to try and enhance their position or just because they want a bit of a thrill or whatever, for whatever reason. And it's the begging question that you brought up, that I'm, you know, trying to drill down. that I'm, you know, trying to drill down on. Yes, so, I mean, one of the things that we've got to drill down on, all these things, if we're trying to make an objective decision today about whether this is a suitable location or otherwise for that kind of business. So, what, I think what we've got from you is that you think that this would actually exacerbate a problem that we've already got. But it's not, is it? It may well be because it's not adequately pleased, not in the way that just to defend, but in affecting intelligence. Because there are places where we have problems when they disperse the, you know, when you disperse a problem, you get a problem in another area.
I don't think councillor Johnson's necessarily in the nicest way. You're probably not an expert on how the drug dealing may be proliferated or made worse by the premises. I think that would probably be an issue for the police. But I think we've covered it.
The problem is really gambling that we're really trying to focus on. But, I mean, we know that some of the similar types of people are feeding these vulnerable people. So, sometimes with money and by making them, asking them to sell on drugs and so on. But, so, I've got it from you that you believe that this would exacerbate the problem. You're not against businesses, you're against that particular business. And that's what I was trying to drill down on.
Absolutely right, yeah. As we know, the point about displacement of drug dealing is a separate issue. But we do know there's evidence of harms caused by the location of gambling shops because of our experiences around Haymarket and Fitzalan Square. So, you see how the premises attract people who, you know, do take drugs but also beg off all the people. And then you see the acknowledged improvement when those premises close. You know, that's the important thing. And I think from that is a reasonable inference that you can work out what happens if you open a new gambling premises in the location that you know well as the bottom of Fargate there. That's the point.
Thank you. If there's no questions, any questions from the applicants, please?
Councillor, thank you.
Can I just introduce myself?
Yes, my name's Mohammed Eliahussef, I'm the solicitor, I represent the applicant. Apologies. Councillor, thank you. I have a number of questions. Are you of the view that this is the wrong part of the city for this type of business?
Yeah, you will probably have picked that up from what I've been saying for the last few minutes. Yeah, see, it's definitely the wrong part of the city.
Thank you. And are you of the view the other adult gaming centres in Sheffield are not complying with and meeting the licensing objectives?
So, I'm actually not in a position to, you know, know enough about the licensing objectives in relation to those particular premises. And off the top of my head, I don't know the details of the licenses. I think a large part of it is that those have been there a long time and presumably had their licence in the first place under a different licensing regime. Not sure they would necessarily be granted licenses now. And the point is that, you know, now we're looking at, the panel here is looking at the additional harm that would be caused by the, by the opening of this premises there. So, yeah.
Thank you. Are you aware that are provisions in law to seek the review of a licence which doesn't comply with the licensing objectives?
Sure, yeah, in the same sense that there are provisions for crimes to be punished after they've taken place. You know, you can be prosecuted for rape and jailed. It's better if the rape doesn't take place, isn't it? So this is all about prevention, really. The issue here is that, you know, obviously, I mean, you'll acknowledge that, you know, your business will cause harms to a number of people. And the job of the licensing committee today is to decide whether those harms are sufficiently minor so as to, you know, justify, you know, allowing your business to move into Sheffield. It's not a substitute for, you know, allowing your business to come and cause problems and then say, there's a problem, now we should look at it, you know. This is about prevention of harms, isn't it?
Just for the record, the applicant doesn't accept that his business would cause harm if this licence were to be granted. I just want that for the record.
Well, I think my view would be that actually our experience of gambling businesses in general, and with no particular comment on your business, I suppose, any others, is that they do cause harms for the reasons I've explained.
Thank you, councillor. My last question was, have you sought a review of any of the other establishments for non-compliance with the licensing objectives? And if you have not, why not?
So with the licensing system in Sheffield, you know, we have our experiences. In practice, it's always quite difficult to seek reviews and once a business has a licence. And there's a lot of reasons for that, obviously. It doesn't mean that they're not causing any harm. And the question is about the level of harm that, you know, is permitted and tolerated by businesses in Sheffield and how the licensing authority would see that. So what we're saying today, this is an opportunity not to add to those harms that's already there. Dealing with other businesses. And in reality, the problem is that, you know, the argument would be that licensing conditions are not really adequate to deal with the problems of antisocial behaviour in the city centre. So, undoubtedly they cause them. And the reason I say that, I think it will be difficult, if I were on the licensing panel, I think I would find it difficult to find enough conditions that would adequately protect the city centre from the likely impact of opening new premises here.
Thank you, councillor. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Johnson, sorry, I think my colleague has one more question.
Good. So I had a bit of a problem with the audio today, I do apologise. Just listening to those exchanges and so on. Is it not the case that the local plan designates this area for entertainment? And given what you said about antisocial behaviour and all the rest of it, entertainment businesses by their nature might well attract that antisocial behaviour. So, are you saying that this particular site is not suitable for any entertainment purposes, or is it just this particular?
Not actually sure what the local plan says about it in terms of entertainment. But in terms of the way the city centre's going, I mean, we know, don't we, that Fargate is no longer primarily a retail place that it once was. The city centre as a whole is moving much more towards sort of the leisure and the leisure industry, hospitality. The problem is that, you know, of course, this type of business doesn't really add much to that. I mean, it's by its own definition, it's catering for a relatively small number of people with a particular interest on the face of it. So, and it doesn't add much to the ambiance. It's not like having, you know, a decent pavement cafe or a restaurant or, you know, a gig venue or something that, you know, would appeal to a larger number of people. So, in terms of planning, I guess you would say that it's not inconsistent to have, you know, gambling premises in this location principle. But in terms of licensing, and as you know, there's always that separation of planning and licensing. In terms of licensing, the issue is about location and, you know, just what I said before about, you know, it being a draw to antisocial behaviour. So, yeah, so in planning terms, it might be acceptable with the licence. It depends on a particular licence application, doesn't it? Does that make sense again?
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Okay, if there's no more questions, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Chandra, next one?
Okay, we have the Residents' Association changing chef, Peter Sefton.
Thank you, good morning, chef. Good morning, everybody. Oh, it's good afternoon, I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's not, it's still only quarter past eleven. Seems to have been a long time. My name is Peter Sefton and I chair the City Centre Residents' Association, Changing Chef. It's called Changing Chef because our aim is to introduce changes that make the city centre into a great place to live as our population grows to 35,000 residents over the next six years living inside the Inner Ring Road. Our objection to this application is on page 38 of the document bundle in front of us, and you can read what it says. I want to pull out from it two key points relating to preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder, being associated with crime or disorder, or being used to support crime. First, our Residents' Association was the inspiration in 2015 of what became the Help Us Help amalgamation of organisations aiming to support the street community. And we, our objective was to assist their rehabilitation into society. At the time, the problem focused on the emergence of spice and its dreadful consequences. Eight years later brings us to today and the remarkable amalgamation of 24 agencies that jointly provide support for those whose lives have caused them to choose a preference for being on the city centre streets. The agencies range from a volunteer soup kitchen to church-based groups, to health and addiction professionals, the Archer project, Ben Centre and the city council. From the point of view of residents who live in the city centre, this excellent coordination of resources has prevented the problem from growing out of control. But there remains a hardcore of people who will not avail themselves of the support that's being offered. Staying on the street in a city with a thriving night time economy and 60,000 students can be a useful source of income to fund an unhealthy lifestyle, which leads to some egregious forms of antisocial behaviour. And regrettably, despite the best efforts of the Help Us Help agencies, these problems are concentrated in the area of this application, the lower end of Fargate, High Street and the cathedral. Which is why we, as residents, strongly oppose the location of this for an adult gaming centre. The area is already a source of crime and disorder despite the best efforts of all the agencies involved. At paragraph six on page 38 of the original bundle, you can see just a few of the reports that have reached Changing Chef about antisocial behaviour in the area. That's paragraph six on page 38. And it's the proposed location of these premises that cause us great concern. So let me move now from the importance of the location to the influence of a gaming centre on the people who congregate in this area. Excuse me, we have to consider the addiction issues. We must have regard to the people who would be attracted by the advertised £500 daily prize. Our experience from the gambling outlets of Admiral Casino, Betfred and the others now closed in Fitzalan Square shows how these opportunities draw in a hardcore street community that doesn't respond to the availability of support. And it leads to an increase in antisocial behaviour. Police resources are already stretched by the current situation around Fargate, High Street and the cathedral. And experience shows that a Royal Amusement Gaming Centre in this location would make the problems worse. Fitzalan Square needed a complete makeover at considerable expense to remove concealed locations and lower the incidences of antisocial behaviour. My comments so far are based on our experience as a Residents' Association, but there has been substantial research on these issues as explained in recent official reports and the director of public health in his presentation. The government's gambling-related harms evidence review states, "The socio-democratic profile of gamblers appears to change as gambling risk increases, with harmful gambling associated with people who are unemployed and among people living in more deprived areas. This suggests harmful gambling is related to health inequalities." The people we are concerned about have substantial health inequalities and they congregate around the area where this proposal is going to be put. Let's not mince our words here. Excuse me, this is a highly addictive product that is asking permission to enter our £18 million redevelopment of Fargate and its proponents want it to come into an area that is already the focus for addicted people with severe health inequalities. The gambling industry is not a benevolent act that aims to provide fun. It is designed to extract money by using products with highly addictive properties. The interests of the industry are in conflict with those of public health, which means it is in conflict with the challenges we already face in Sheffield city centre. Furthermore, there is the claim in the application that a substantial amount of money will be brought into the city by this adult gaming centre. But there is another way of looking at that comment. There is the promise of a £500 daily prize and some members of the street community will find that extremely attractive. Panhandling with an empty coffee cup that takes place currently, alleged for some spare change for a cup of tea, will probably change to a new message which is, spare some change to put into the slot machines in Royal Amusement Arcade. So sympathetic residents of Sheffield will be indirectly pouring their generous donations into coffee cups via, into the profits of Royal Amusements. In conclusion, the licensing objective refers to preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder and prevent it from being associated with crime or disorder. This area is a crime and disorder hotspot. Read our experiences at paragraph six on page 38. We know that research confirms that harmful gambling is related to health inequalities. The people who are causing problems in this area have substantial, substantial health inequalities and we should not dangle this attraction in front of them. It's completely the wrong place for this kind of product at this time. And we, as Changing Chef, representing the residents who live in the area of the city centre, hope this committee will agree with our views.
Okay, thank you.
You sort of finished by saying this is not the right place. And that seems to be the thrust of what councillor Johnson said earlier. So do you therefore by default say that there are right places for such places? Because you're saying that this isn't the right place. Do you believe there are places where it's right for there to be gambling? Because, I mean, it seems a slightly disingenuous argument, one could say, to say this isn't right for here and to say it's a terrible thing. If it's a terrible thing, it's not right for anywhere, is it?
I'm not saying that. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying this is the wrong place for this product at this time. Yes, I'm having the same with mine. I can't, it won't go on.
Reference is made, I think, by councillor Johnson to propose PSBO. Now, some of the discussion around that, I believe, has been that this will move the problem to somewhere else. So if the PSBO was to come in and if those who object to PSBO say it moves the problem of begging and all the rest of it somewhere else, then the PSBO could potentially make this a right place to have this establishment. Could it not?
A little bit too hypothetical for Mr Sefton.
No, 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 don't judge me.
No, no. Just trying to keep it to the facts.
Yeah, well, you're right to do that, but, no, the point is, this is a hotspot for antisocial behaviour and it has been for quite a long time. And for the reasons that have been described before, Greg Fell explained that, the director of public health explained, we have so many agencies around this area who are trying to help the people with public health issues and addiction issues, that this has naturally become a hotspot. And of course, it's a hotspot as well because of the comments the councillor Johnson made, that it's an intersection point between large numbers of people who are coming through the city centre. The buses, the taxis, the Fargate community, people shopping, people coming up from Castle Gate area. It is a hotspot for all kinds of people coming to that point. And therefore, if you put this somewhere else in the city centre, it won't be, well, unless you put it at the top of Fargate or somewhere like that, which would also be wrong. It's a hotspot for the people with addiction problems. Now, they don't always look like people with addiction problems. I mean, some of them look quite reasonable. Some of them could walk happily into a Royal Amusing Gaming Centre and be accepted. But they have serious addiction problems for alcohol, drugs and... Centre and be accepted, but they have serious addiction problems for alcohol, drugs, and gambling. So the point I'm making in response, Chair, to your comment, is that it will never work in this area because it's always going to be a focal point, and always has been a focal point, ever since it was Cole's Corner, it was a focal point in the city centre, and it's never going to change. So this is the wrong place for this magnet that draws people in for the reasons that we are trying to help them with in the city centre. It's a the wrong place at the wrong time at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Yes. Councillor Davidson? I'm going to ask the same question as I asked before, because obviously you are a prominent member of the residents' association, and it's in your interest to get rid of businesses that interfere with living. So are you against businesses within the city centre, bearing in mind that when you live in the city centre, you know that those businesses are there, and that was the purpose of city centres, to provide business? Is it, so, are you against business per se, or is it this particular time?
Well, the first thing is, this business wasn't here when I moved into the city centre in two thousand and five, so that makes the point that the city centre is constantly changing, and we accept that. It's the most exciting place to live, I've lived here now for eighteen years, and the council's plans to invest half a billion pounds, five hundred million pounds into the centre of Sheffield are based on people coming to live here. That's a whole new concept of the city centre, and it's a whole new concept for all town and city centres in the UK. We're at the advanced stage of this redevelopment of urban areas. So if we're going to expend five hundred million pounds, it's going to be a really exciting city centre, and I'm looking forward to it, and advocating people should come and live in it. But the one thing that people say when I say to them, 'Come and live in the city centre, it's going to be a great place to live', is, 'I couldn't cope with the antisocial behaviour, the begging, the addiction, the problems that are in the city centre.' It's the one factor that people say they don't want to see and they don't want to be involved with, and it's the one thing that drags down our city centre. Excuse me.
Sorry, you're not answering the question.
I am answering your question, councillor.
No, you're not. Look, the question, the point that you're making is that it's constantly changing, we accept that, but when people come to live in the city centre, they know that there are businesses there. Now, if we say that there are antisocial problems that we must get rid of, yeah, that's certainly a point that we need to address. But what I'm trying to ask is, businesses per se, do you expect businesses still to be in the city centre, and do you still welcome them, or is it, are you against a particular business, and that's this one?
I'm not against it, we are not against it, we accept new businesses will come into the city centre. This business can go anywhere it likes in the city centre, as long as it doesn't go on Fargate, the place that it's identified. You said that ASB is not, is not one point, ASB is the point in the city centre at the moment, it is the most important point in the city centre, and that's what I'm here to stress. Antisocial behaviour follows places where gambling can take place. We've seen that on Fitzalan Square, you know, we had four outlets on Fitzalan Square, now we've only got two, and that's because it's been cleaned up, it's been improved, and a lot of money was spent on it. But you can't do that at the bottom of Fargate, because it is this focal point for so many people coming through. So we, I accept your point, I accept your point, and we're happy that this comes in, but not where they want to put it.
Yeah, okay, but you're not unhappy about businesses being in the centre?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Thank you, that's fine, so that answers your question. Right, questions from applicant?
Sir, are you aware the applicant's business does not offer a five hundred pound daily prize?
It said in the application it offered a five hundred pound daily prize.
Councillors, I'm just going to try and find the application in my bundle before I address that point, if you'd allow me a moment. I can deal with the point in submissions later, but certainly it doesn't offer a five hundred pound daily prize.
Okay, move on, any other questions?
I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Okay, there's no more questions, then, thank you very much for your presentation.
There has been evidence, it may have been in the press, but there has been evidence of this prize, so I will look for it as well and come back to you. Thank you.
Okay, shall my next one?
We have Victoria Hall Methodist Church.
Good morning, yes, my name's Reverend Jonathan Hague, I'm the minister, I'm a Sheffield Methodist Circuit Minister, looking after Victoria Hall Methodist Church. I'm also trustee of the Foundry, which is a not-for-profit charity that manages the Victoria Hall as a place for the city centre as well. Rose Durant, who was here with the Foundry, unfortunately had to leave, because the work is just being started, thanks to the money that has been given to the Chapel Walk project that you've given to the Foundry of Victoria Hall, so that we can be an excellent, safe space and a welcome gateway to the city, which is very, very important. And Rose has just given me a very short statement because she had to leave to oversee that, so at the end of mine, are you happy, it took about two minutes, are you happy for me just to add that to it, because it is all part of the same thing, is that okay, sir? Thank you. So yes, the reason why I'm here is because, from a human and pastoral and social place, really, of caring for people in the city. Sheffield has been my city since I was a little boy, travelling in from Swinton where I was born, but Sheffield is my city, and I've got a passion. I work at Victoria Hall in the morning, in the morning worship, and the people that have started arriving to the church to join us, for lots of different reasons, a lot of them now walk to our premises, who now are resident in the area, George Street, and very close walking distance from Victoria Hall. And then in the evening, we run something called Oasis, which is primarily for people who are vulnerable in the city, we offer them some food, and a place of warmth and welcome and care. And it was one of the people, David, who's with me today, who came very upset by seeing the application of this premises being sought to become a gambling centre, which it is, because David, who would be willing to speak if you would allow him, himself is a gambling addict, and particularly machine, places where there are slot machines are a great weakness of his. At part of Victoria Hall is Thirty-Five Chapel Walk, which is almost a neighbour to what this gambling centre would be. And at Thirty-Five Chapel Walk, and in Victoria Hall, we have many groups of people who we're trying to help, who have got severe gambling addictions, as well as other addictions as well, and we're trying to help them to overcome their addictions, give them a safe place, give them a place where they can come and use their time in a different way, and find support and care without judgement of those people. And David was very upset to see that this could become a gambling centre, because literally it's on the edge of Chapel Walk, which means that these people have to walk right past that place to get to the places that are helping them, not to be addicts anymore, not to have to, not to be tempted to go into these places anymore. And we know that gambling, addiction is an illness, and so we're trying to abate that illness, and help and give them other reasons and other purposes in their lives, but they will have to walk straight past this shop. I'm very excited about the future of Chapel Walk, and I remember walking up there when I was a lad, and seeing how it was a thriving, vibrant place, with lots of different shops, and places to have coffee, and people just used to enjoy chatting there. I'm very excited that there's going to be new lighting and an encouragement for all those shops, once again, to be, have people in them, and to have a new vibrancy there, as a welcome from people coming from the, from the station, from the bus stations, coming into the Sheffield, and to it being a place of welcome and hospitality to the city. And I would question whether this is counterintuitive to have a gambling centre as part of the threshold of the welcome to what is exciting to see what's going to be happening on Fargate with entertainment, and social, and hospitality companies that are going to be moving into the city. We're also, a neighbour to this place is the City of Sanctuary, and again, a place where many vulnerable people who have moved to the city come to find first aid help, to find friendship, and to also have guidance on how to live their lives well. And maybe naively, some of these people who have arrived in the city, even though it's wonderful that we were the first ever City of Sanctuary, a lot of these people naively might think that Sheffield is paved with gold, and maybe even consider that such gambling opportunities mean that they can get a quick win and climb up the ladder, and start being able to have more money in their pockets, where we know that that is possibly an elusive chasing the gold at the end of the rainbow, which is always elusive, and never there at all. I agree with other people that have said that location does matter. Thirty-Five Chapel Walk, we now host many organisations that are trying to help people with addictions, and so also at Victoria Hall itself, we have many organisations that are trying to help people who are vulnerable, whose temptation may be too great, at the end of Chapel Walk, to go into a place like one of these gambling centres, and to be blinded by the exciting lights and the vibrancy of the place, rather than coming to finding hope and support as well. I do acknowledge the work that has been given by the business, to show us that they're going to be trying to do everything to safeguard and help people to know that it is not going to be a vulnerable place. But it's easy to talk the talk, but it's a different thing to walk the walk, and the reality of it is, is that it will be a place where the vulnerable will be attracted because of the illnesses that they're trying to overcome. So I question the appropriateness of this business. I am not opposed to businesses coming onto Fargate, we are very, very excited about all the plans for Chapel Walk and for Fargate, and all the opportunities to build up relationships, and offer a place of welcome and care and security that Victoria Hall stands for, along with my partners at the cathedral as well, the Sunday Centre, which offers meals for the homeless as well, which happens every Sunday, and over a hundred meals are served every Sunday for the vulnerable. Again, all will have to walk past such a gambling centre before they get there, and the temptation will be very great. I have witnessed firsthand the pain, the brokenness, and the poverty of many people who have been sucked into a gambling addiction, and I do not think that it is the best thing to have on Fargate, neither do I think it fits with the welcome that the council want to offer to people who come into the city as well. Are you happy for me just to read this very, very brief part to it as well, because it all fits in with the same, is that okay? So from Rose, who is the CEO of the Foundry, a charity which runs the Victoria Hall building, the building is a hub of support for people, we see approximately one thousand five hundred individuals accessing services throughout the week. Around eighty percent of these are classed as vulnerable, and therefore potentially at risk of harm. One of the services within the building is a star recovery course, which I am, Rose says, the part of the leadership team. There is a twelve-step recovery course for anyone who is in addiction within the group, and about thirty percent of attendees have gambling addiction, which they are actively seeking help from. The members have expressed significant concerns about the fact that to access the support group, they have to walk past the gambling shop. I understand that from the application that risk assessments have been undertaken, however, for someone with an addiction, knowing what is behind those blacked-out windows is enough. There are a number of other gambling establishments further down from Chapel Walk, towards Castle Square, but to being, having another establishment closer to where there are so vulnerable people, especially those who are actively trying to move away from that lifestyle, could potentially be extremely harmful for a number of individuals. Our stance remains to object to the application.
Thank you very much for that. Questions? No questions, my colleague's question from applicant? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, so I think there's one more objection, then after that, we will take our comfort before we call the applicant to make their presentation, so shall my next one, please?
Thank you, so we've been the Foundry Victoria Hall, but Reverend Hague has provided a statement, would be Cathedral Church, but we've been notified that they are able to attend today, and then we have the resident, Anne Walton. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Just. Yes, I'm Anne Walton. My objection comes from being a city centre resident, although I'm a member of the residents' association, Changing Chef, and I'm an associate priest at Sheffield Cathedral. These organisations have made their separate representations, so this is from a point of view of being a resident. And I'd like first of all to make it clear that although I'm here as a Christian priest, I'm not commenting today on the moral aspect of gaming machines or gambling, since I understand these don't come into the equation of whether this licence is going to be granted or not. In the same way that Royal Amusements comments about the benefits of their accommodation, their operations, in terms of bringing things to the city, in terms of giving enjoyment to the city centre, also are of no consequence in considering this licence, that's my understanding. To say I love living in the city, and probably to preempt councillor Davidson's questions about living in the city centre, is, the council are encouraging more residents to be here, and there is a growing number of residents who live in the city centre. We love it, and we love it because of the diversity of the businesses that are here. And many people use the gambling, the betting offices and things, but there has to be a balance of those, and I think that question of balance, of how many there are, what sort of businesses there are, is an important issue if you're going to encourage people to live here, and we're going to live side by side with the commercial centre. What's relevant to this application is the venue on crime and disorder, we've heard a lot about that, about the protection of vulnerable people. And I don't doubt that the applicant has these protections and schemes in places, and probably runs some good gaming venues. I live over a betting shop, I've never seen any problems. I've never seen any problems there. I frequently pass the Genting Casino and I don't feel anxious. However, the police and the council have evidence of gambling venues in places like Haymarket contributing to increasing levels of antisocial behaviour in those areas. And as Councillor Johnson was saying, removing those has improved the area. So that proposal to come to Fargate is, as we've heard, putting temptation in the face of those who can least resist. I'm sorry, I'm repeating things, I'll try them over quickly, but I think I need to do that. The bottom of Fargate is a troubled area. It's a place where troubled, vulnerable people with addictions and personalities gather. It's a place where young, excitable, vulnerable children pour off the buses after a bad day at school, looking for diversions. I know the safeguarding about age is in there. There are a number of students who are actually living in the city centre, another group who are known to be at higher risk of succumbing to harmful effects of gambling. It's a place at Fargate identified by the police for antisocial behaviour and it has those special policing measures that are there already. They don't do that without a reason. It's a place where drinkers from other cities come. When I'm discussing, talking about this to the people who I meet at the cathedral, the people from the streets I meet at the cathedral, they complain about guys coming in from Barnsley, Chesterfield, other places to their city centre. So it's not only our own people that are in Sheffield, but other cities and towns in South Yorkshire that come to have some crack, as it were. I don't mean the drug. A new venue for easy, fun gambling will only increase that problem, a little bit like pouring petrol on fire really, isn't it? The applicant cites many places where gambling takes place in a well-ordered way and they make claims of holding responsible attitudes to the harming, harmful effects of gambling. And Royal Amusements claim to be responsible in their operations. But we still have those reports from the Public Health England, from our own Director of Public Health, about the numbers that actually are harmed by these things. Clearly, measures aren't working well enough. I wondered if this type of gambling was of more or lesser effect than betting and other forms of gambling. And I saw a study by Recover For All that reported that the most addictive types of gambling is slot machines, although online gambling is catching up. And this study says that slot machines have earned the nickname of the crack cocaine of gambling. So this is a specifically harmful, addictive sort of activity. So the evidence redeems that harm can be done even in the most well-ordered places. The applicant also paints a nice picture of a cosy environment with tea and coffee where it's served and it tells us that half the clients are female. Now, perhaps I'm a little cynical here, but I do wonder if this is just a marketing ploy to attract women who would traditionally not go to betting shops or casinos. Governments today show, we've heard today, that disproportionate harm is done to people in deprivation, the homeless and those with mental health issues, those already struggling with other forms of addiction. So why then choose a place in Sheffield where such vulnerability is endemic on their doorstep? Where the public suffer harassments, harassments of residents, harassments of people going to the work, to the banks, and where crime and stubbings have taken place in the last few months? That's been said. Additional, yeah, I welcome the additional conditions that have been imposed and we've heard of more, which I didn't know about by the police today. I'm pleased about most, but the question is whether it's realistic to assume that the employees at Royal Amusements can control behaviours outside the building. And it's the behaviours outside the building that I think there's been more concern expressed about today. That sort of antisocial behaviour which has come from that, which the police and city centre ambassadors are struggling to contain. More than one person has said that this business may have a place in the city centre. But really, to target this particular place at Fargate is probably not wise at all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. No questions, colleagues? No questions from members, any questions from applicant?
Madam, just one question. You made a reference to slot machines being described as the crack cocaine of gambling. Can I ask where you've got that reference from and is it actually a reference to FOBTs, which are the fixed odds betting terminals that are usually described as the crap cocaine of gambling?
The reference was a study by Recover For All, which is an organisation that does what it says. There were, I'm not sure, but I think there were other sort of slot machines and blah blah blah, which might be those terms you were describing to. I cannot guarantee that, but I think so. But they're very similar sorts of operations, aren't they? They're very similar sort of machines, do the same job as it were. You put money in and you hope you win something. You put money in, you hope you win something, yeah? And I think that's the problem, that sort of constant feeding of machine in, yeah.
Thank you. I'll deal with in my submissions, the position with FOBTs, fixed odds betting terminals, that only are found in betting shops, not in adult gaming centres.
Okay, if there's no more questions, is there any?
Councillor, I don't have any more questions, but I wonder, just before we stop for a comfort break, whether it might be possible, if I could ask a question of the last witness and it's my fault entirely for not asking the question when the witness was sat just across there. So I wonder if I could have permission to ask a question of the previous witness, if that's possible.
Is there just one question?
Just one question.
Okay. Yeah, do you want to come in, look to the mic, please? Yes.
Councillors, thank you for giving me permission. Reverend, I'm looking at the document that you sent in and the subject heading is opposing the planning permission of Royal Amusements. And then it goes on to say opposing to planning application from Mohammed Yusaf. Reverend, you're aware that this isn't an application for planning, that this is an application for a licence?
Yes, I am.
And you still hold those same views and objections?
Yes, I do. Obviously, since the application was put in, there's been a lot of time between that and a lot of opportunity for those things that we've been said to do. Developed, time has been given to reflect more deeply on what has been said so eloquently by other people that I support as well. So, yes.
Thank you, Reverend. I don't have any more questions, councillors, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for everyone so far. Obviously, we now have the applicants to come forward there and make their presentation, but before that, I think we all need a bit of a break. So we're going to take 10 minutes, we can all be back here at five past twelve. Thank you. Okay, right, we'll hand over to the applicants then, start making their presentation. Thank you.
Councillor, do I remain seated here or do you require me across there?
You can remain there, that's fine.
Thank you.
Chair, would it be okay if everybody introduced themselves for the minutes, please?
Yes, yeah, if anybody, everybody can, all the applicant representatives can introduce themselves, please, yeah, thank you.
It was my intention to introduce all those that are with me, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. And if I could introduce those that are with me today, as you're aware, I represent the applicant. I have with me to my right, Mr Stewart. His statement is contained within the applicant's bundle. To my right again, I have the applicant himself. And then to the right of the applicant, we have Mr Butterworth. And at the very end, we have Mr Edge. To prepare for the meeting, my client has put together a bundle which includes witness statements. There are two experts' reports, one from Mr Butterworth and one from Mr Edge. We have an updated, amended, detailed local area risk assessment. We've also included operational policies and extracts from my client's compliance manual. All of this material provides detailed bank of evidence, evidential material, explaining why there will not be any relevant impact if this licence is granted. If there are any questions, it's my intention to deal with those questions. I believe I have sufficient instructions from the applicant to deal with any inquiries that may be made by yourselves or by anybody else. Councillors, I wonder if I could start by saying a little bit about the test that you asked by Parliament in relation to making a decision on the application that is before the subcommittee today. And it's different to the test under the Licensing Act, with which I imagine all of you will be very familiar. And the test that you are asked by Parliament to apply reads as follows. 'In exercising their functions under this part, a licensing authority shall aim to permit the use of premises for gambling in so far as the authority thinks'. And it will probably be useful if I could take you to that in the agenda bundle. Now, it looks like I have some slightly different numbering on my agenda bundle than that which is before you, councillors. I wonder if it's perhaps easier if I direct you to the applicant's bundle. Can I just ask if all of you have the applicant's bundle? And I should have asked, have you had the opportunity to read the applicant's bundle?
Yes, we have, yes.
Thank you. So if I could take you to page 13 of the applicant's bundle. And I'm hoping that starts at the top with paragraph 46. And if I could take you down to paragraph 48, where it states, 'As the subcommittee will be aware, the approach in law relevant to the grant of a premises licence is found at section 153 of the Gambling Act 2005', and it reads as follows. 'In exercising their functions under this part, a licensing authority shall aim to permit the use of premises for gambling in so far as the authority thinks'. And then we have A, B, C and D. 'In accordance with any relevant code of practice'. Now, it's not being suggested today that the grant of this licence would not be in accordance with any relevant code of practice. We then have B, 'in accordance with any relevant guidance issued by the commission', and it refers to the Gambling Commission. Again, it's not being suggested today that the grant of this licence would not be in accordance with the relevant guidance issued by the Gambling Commission. C, reasonably consistent with the licensing objectives. And D, in accordance with the authority's statement of licensing policy. Now, if I could deal with D first before I deal with C. It's not being suggested that the grant of the licence today is not in accordance with the Sheffield City Council licensing policy. And if I could finally deal with C, reasonably consistent with the licensing objectives. Now, this is where we have representations and I'm going to deal with those representations. But the thrust of my submissions will be this. Points of objection have been raised, which are, we say, not relevant to the gambling licence jurisdiction, such as demand, whether there are enough premises, the character of the area, the number of gambling premises already in existence, whether they bring any benefit, and/or that amount to a dislike of gambling, or any other objections which are not supported by evidence in relation to any harm that may be caused, or are not supported by evidence of harm caused by this applicant's premises elsewhere. So that will be the thrust of my submissions, that the points of objection which are raised broadly fall into those four categories, that either they are not relevant in law, they amount to a dislike of gambling generally, they're not supported by evidence, and they're not supported by any evidence of harm being caused by my client's premises in the other nine venues that are run in West Yorkshire and in the Greater Manchester area. Now, to the extent that the representations that have been made do relate to the licensing objectives, and I will keep referring back to the licensing objectives. So to the extent that those representations deal with the licensing objectives or relate to the licensing objectives, we say they do not provide any evidence which demonstrates that the application will harm the licensing objectives. When we look at or we consider the obligations in the licensing conditions and codes of practice, the mandatory licensing conditions, the individual licence conditions that we have proposed, the contents of the updated risk assessment, the regulatory history of the applicant, and the fact that the applicant has premises in areas of greater deprivation, areas of higher crime, where there are a presence of greater numbers of vulnerable persons, and over a period of almost four decades, those premises have been run without any regulatory concern, there haven't been any... There haven't been any reviews by any licensing authority. There haven't been any complaints made by any of the responsible bodies, any of the responsible authorities about the way those premises have been run since 1984. We also say that the representations which have been made are at odds with the position which has been adopted by the responsible authorities. We did have an objection from South Yorkshire Police that's been withdrawn. They are content with additional conditions being proposed. The licensing department had not made any representations at all, and I say that's important, that's very important, because the licensing department are usually described as the guardian of the licensing objectives. So if there's any of those three responsible authorities that the licensing subcommittee should be taking advice from, primarily it would be the licensing department, because they know, in my respectful submission, more so than South Yorkshire Police, more so than environmental health, what the position is with the licensing objectives, whether they will be met, or they are unlikely to be met, or whether there will be any harm to the licensing objectives. So going back to the test which is set by Parliament. And that's the aim to permit in section 153 of the Gambling Act 2005. And it's explained by the Gambling Commission's guidance to licensing authorities as follows: 'The Act places a legal duty on licensing authorities to aim to permit gambling in so far as it is considered to be reasonably consistent with the pursuit of the licensing objectives', and that's why I will keep referring to the licensing objectives. The Act places, and I'll say it again, 'The Act places a legal duty on licensing authorities to aim to permit gambling in so far as it is considered to be reasonably consistent with the pursuit of the licensing objectives'. Now, the effect of this duty is that licensing authorities must approach their functions in a way that seeks to regulate gambling. By using your powers, for example, to attach conditions to licences, to moderate the impact on the licensing objectives, rather than by starting out to prevent it altogether. It's often said, and I will say it now, the presumption is in favour of granting a licence unless there is evidence before the committee that the licensing objectives will not be met or are unlikely to be met. Now, there's a number of points I want to make about section 153 of the Act. My first point is, it's a mandatory test. Now, if I could take you to page 99 of the applicant's bundle, and that's our bundle. So there we have it, page, apologies councillors, I'll wait until you've got there. So, page 99 of our bundle, we have an extract from the Gambling Commission's guidance to licensing authorities. And that deals with the aim to permit. Now, 'shall aim to permit' is described by the Gambling Commission as the authority's primary obligation. It creates a presumption that you should grant the licence where there will be compliance with what follows. And that which follows is that which I describe as A, B, C and D. Now, I just want to say a little bit more about the aim to permit. Now, if I could ask you to turn over to page 100, which is the next page of our bundle. Now, three quarters of the way down page 100. Page 100, by the way, is an extract from the licensing textbook, Patterson's Licensing Act. I'm sure the subcommittee will be very familiar with that practitioner text. Three quarters of the way down the page, it states, when talking about the Act, and that's what Parliament have are explaining is the position, 'it creates a presumption in favour of granting the premises licence since it is only if the licence is granted that the premises may lawfully be used for gambling'. But the duty seems to go further than that. The verb to aim is defined by the Oxford English Dictionary as meaning, 'to calculate one's course with a view to arrive at a particular point'. And then it goes on, but in a nutshell, the presumption is in favour of granting the licence. And that, of course, is from Patterson's. Now, if I could take you back two pages, to page 98 of the applicant's bundle. This again is an extract from the guidance to local authorities from the Gambling Commission, paragraph 5.34, and I'm going to read that in its entirety. 'Licensing authorities should be aware that other considerations such as moral or ethical objections to gambling are not a valid reason to reject applications for premises licences. In deciding to reject an application, a licensing authority should rely on reasons that demonstrate that the licensing objectives are not being or are unlikely to be met, and such objections do not relate to the licensing objectives. An authority's decision cannot be based on dislike of gambling or a general notion that it is undesirable to allow gambling premises in an area, with the exception of the casino resolution powers, because of course, local authority do have powers in relation to casinos, but we're not dealing with that here. Councillors, you will recall, I did ask of a number of the witnesses if they felt any of the other premises in Sheffield were not complying with the licensing objectives. My recollection is, none of the witnesses answered that in the affirmative. None of the witnesses are of the view that licensing objectives are not being complied with in other premises. One of my submissions is, that is because licensing objectives are being complied with in other premises in Sheffield city centre. If they were not being complied with, the matter would be brought back before the licensing subcommittee for a review. None of the other licences in Sheffield are the subject of a review, have ever been the subject of a review, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong. And none of the other licences are at risk of review. So that particular paragraph does make the point. An authority can't refuse a licence because it thinks it's undesirable to allow gambling premises or further gambling premises in a particular area. So the suggestion that gambling premises are not good for a particular area are contrary to the guidance that's been issued by the Gambling Commission to licensing authorities. If there is a refusal, it has to be for reasons which demonstrate, and demonstrate means by evidence, it has to be for reasons which demonstrate that the licensing objectives are not being met or are unlikely to be met. And this takes me to my next point, in terms of demonstrate, well, how do we demonstrate? How would the licensing subcommittee reach a conclusion, using that term demonstrate? Well, it has to be by evidence. So what you have here, in my respectful submission, is a focused discretion where you're being asked to focus on those things in A, B, C and D, and I'll take them back to them. And if an applicant passes A to D, A, B, C and D, there is an obligation to grant the licence. I want to expand on the point about demonstrable evidence. My client operates nine other venues across West Yorkshire and Greater Manchester. And those are counties where there are greater social issues than in South Yorkshire. It's not being suggested by anybody that the operation of those other venues is harming the licensing objectives in any of those other towns and cities. In other words, there is no demonstrable evidence at any of those venues, in any of those towns and cities, that the licensing objectives are being harmed or are not being complied with. Now, if I could take you to page 97 of our bundle, I believe it's just a page back from where you are at the moment. 5.31, and again, this is the guidance from the Gambling Commission to licensing authorities. 5.31 states, 'Licensing authorities should not turn down applications for premises licences where relevant objections can be dealt with through the use of conditions'. And the thrust of my submission will be that where there are relevant objections, and I don't concede all the objections are relevant, but where there are relevant objections, they can be dealt with through the use of conditions. That's the guidance from the Gambling Commission to licensing authorities. And I would say what that means is that the licensing subcommittee has to work towards an aim to permit, because that's section 153 of the Act. So if the licensing subcommittee find that there is a problem, it should look to overcome that problem by the imposition of conditions on the licence, if possible, rather than a refusal. There is also a particular paragraph of the guidance, I'll take you to it, councillors, if you require me to. But it's paragraph 9.31 which states, 'Conditions should only be added where it is necessary to do so', and even those conditions must be proportionate to the circumstances requiring a response. The conditions have to be relevant, they have to be directly related, and they have to be fair and reasonable. Now, in this case, my client has proposed conditions. South Yorkshire Police have proposed a number of additional conditions. The licensing department have suggested a tweak to one of the conditions. The response from the licensing department, in fact, was, 'Upon careful examination, it is evident that these proposed conditions are not only robust, but also aligned with the promotion of the licensing objectives. I appreciate the diligence that has gone into drafting these conditions'. So councillors, that's the law. That is how it should be applied, and that is how it is applied by subcommittees across the country. Now, having dealt with the law, I wonder if I could turn to the facts of this particular application. And I'm going to make a number of points. The first point I want to make is about the local licensing authority here in the city of Sheffield. I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong on this point, but the licensing authority here have not initiated any licensing reviews for any of the other gambling establishments in Sheffield city centre. As a matter of fact, there is no evidence before the subcommittee that any of the other premises are harming the licensing objectives. There is no reason to think that the proposed licence, if granted, would harm the licensing objectives. Now, not only is it the case that none of the other licences have been reviewed, but they're not at risk of review either. So the evidence before the committee is that the other licences in Sheffield city centre are complying with the licensing objectives. Not different to the other venues that the applicant has in other towns and cities in West Yorkshire and Greater Manchester, which are complying with the licensing objectives. Now, if I could make some submissions about the applicant. Now, he holds a licence granted to him by the Gambling Commission. It's an operator's licence, and he has held one since the Gambling Commission came into existence around 20 years ago. Prior to that, there was an entirely different licensing regime. And he held licences prior to that, and he has held licences since 1984. So we're approaching four decades. None of those licences have been the subject of a review, let alone a revocation. None of those licences have been subject to a complaint by any responsible authority, whether that's the licensing department, whether it's a police department, in making any complaint to say licensing objectives are not being complied with at any of these venues in these other towns and cities. So his suitability is not in question before you. And in fairness, the products that would be offered if this licence were to be granted, the products are not in question. And I'll come back to the products shortly. So his suitability isn't in question. The systems that he has in place, his policies, his procedures, controls, audits, those are not in question. The quality of the management team, that's not in question. The staff training systems, well, again, that's not in question. So all of these things, his suitability, his management team, the staff training, the policies, procedures, controls, all of them support and promote the licensing objectives and have done over a long period of time, almost four decades. Now, my submission is that the applicant runs these premises to a standard of excellence. Now, the fact that this is achieved to a standard of excellence, I would say is demonstrated by evidence, by the following: that he has nine other venues, that he has been granted licences at every premises where he has applied and by every local authority where he has applied. And he hasn't ever, over a 40-year period, experienced a licence review. Now, you may wonder, why is that the case? It's because he and his management team plan any operation thoroughly and with a primary focus on the licensing objectives. The staff at his venues are trained appropriately. The management team respond to any potential issues identified at the outset. And the fact that they do deal with any potential issues identified at the outset means... means that if any of the relevant agencies, licensing officers, police officers were to go into his premises, there wouldn't be anything which would come as a surprise to him. The venues are subject to regular audits, mystery shoppers, test purchasing, to check on the operations and to ensure that they are up to standard. So there isn't anything really that would come as a surprise to him if a licensing officer were to walk into one of his premises, if a police officer were to walk into one of his premises. And the reason for that is because the management team would have picked up on it and it would have been fixed if there are any issues, because he is an experienced and competent operator. Now, there is evidence before you of this, and if I could ask you to turn to page sixty-eight of our bundle. And if you are all at page sixty-eight, you will see second paragraph from top, this is the report of Mr Edge, who is a licensing consultant, former team leader of a licensing department at a licensing authority in the south of the country. Or formerly, he was, he isn't at the moment. And he says, a paragraph two, 'From the staff I met at the various premises, they seem to be very diligent, knowledgeable and well-trained in their policies and procedures.' Now, my client's premises are not of interest to the police, and they do not generate crime and disorder. You may ask, well, why is that the case? The demographic is different. We, we have a demographic of fifty percent male to fifty percent female. It's very much different to betting offices. The surroundings are plush, spotlessly clean, they're decorated, they're carpeted, tea and coffee is served with biscuits and snacks. Unlike in a betting office, the staff are not hiding behind a thick glass counter, taking money and paying out bets. This is a venue where the staff are on the shop floor, walking the premises in a uniform, speaking to customers, most of whom are regulars that they know in any event. The numbers attending are very low, always, almost always single figures, so it's easy to supervise. Customers come in, sometimes alone, perhaps in couples. They play the machines, they'll have a cup of tea and they will wander out again. You don't get loitering or disorder inside or outside of my client's premises. Now, the staff are trained to actively monitor the exterior. There is CCTV which is deployed inside and outside of the premises. And that means if anyone decides to engage in any type of shenanigans, it would be noticed immediately, logged, passed on to the management team who would review the incident. I wrote to South Yorkshire Police, as well as to the Public Health Department, as well as to the Licensing Department. And on the basis of those detailed submissions over five pages, the South Yorkshire Police were happy to withdraw their objection, propose a number of additional conditions which the applicant does not take issue with. Now, if I could move on to the crime and disorder point, I believe it's dealt with and it's dealt with well. The fact that South Yorkshire Police have decided to withdraw their objection, they accept, I would say, in my respectful submission, that they're happy with the conditions that we propose, and they are of the view, as a responsible authority, that those additional three conditions or four conditions that they propose will not harm the licensing objectives. Now, if I could turn briefly to the gambling policy in Sheffield, it's a particularly lengthy document, I'm not going to take you to it. It is referred to in your agenda. It does not contain any presumptions against licensing in particular locations. Now, there is not in existence a cumulative impact policy which presumes against licensing, licenses being issued in a particular location. So we're dealing with an application for a licence for an adult gaming centre. Now, they are subject to extensive legal obligations. They arise from the Gambling Act two thousand and five, the Gambling Commission's licensing conditions and codes of practice, that runs to some ninety-two pages, mandatory conditions which attach to adult gaming centre premises. And if this application is granted, we have proposed a significant number of conditions which you will find in the bundle. Now, there are also set by Parliament requirements in relation to the content, and you'll recall I made this point earlier where I said, the content of the product that my client is seeking to offer. Now, Parliament has set the stake and prize limits on the machines that one would find in an adult gaming centre. And that's obviously been scrutinised by Parliament before it became law. And in my respectful submission, that stake and prize limit has been scrutinised and it's been carefully thought of with a view to protecting vulnerable people. Add on to that the fact that the operational standards, which you'll find in our bundle, those are rigorously applied by the applicant across all of his other venues. There's not been any criticism of those operational standards by any of the other licensing authorities. There isn't any criticism here either. Now, on the topic of criticism, can I just make a number of points? The criticism or objection is not of the applicant. It's not of the standard of the operations at the other venues. It's not of his other venues, nor the policies and procedures at those other venues. In my respectful submission, there seems to be a criticism of gambling generally and gambling in a particular area. Now, it will be our submission that really, the, what, what needs to be, what ought to be considered by the subcommittee is whether or not the licensing objectives will be complied with, whether they can be complied with, rather than are there already too many venues? What any moral or ethical objections are to gambling, where those premises should be. Now, there are two points on which I want to make specific points. One of them is, well, those two points are children and vulnerable people. Now, in respect of children, the applicant's premises are not attractive to children. These are not seaside arcades. They do not have machines which are attractive to children, that make loud noises, racing car machines, flashing lights. They are not those types of machines. There aren't any pinball machines. All, all the sorts of things that you see when mum and dad take children out to seaside arcades. This is not that type of venue. Now, if a child or a young person were to walk into one of my client's premises, he or she would stick out like a sore thumb and would be out of that door as quick as they came in. That's always been the case, and it's no different here in Sheffield. So it's unattractive to children, it's not marketed to children. There are specific, very specific rules around marketing and advertising where gambling premises must not and cannot be advertised in a way which is attractive to children. And of course, my client complies with those rules to the letter. Not only because if he were not to comply, it's a criminal offence, but because his operator's licence with the Gambling Commission depends on compliance with those rules. He would have to shut down his entire operation if there were children and vulnerable people coming into his premises. Of course, on top of that, it, it would be wrong, it would be unethical, it would be a silly thing to do, to allow children anywhere near his premises. So children cannot see into my client's premises. Now, they can see into betting premises, they can see into public houses, they can go into public houses where they can see gambling taking place. They can see national lottery gaming terminals. But as far as these premises are concerned, they cannot see in, they don't know what's happening inside, and they are not allowed in. He doesn't have issues with children coming into his premises, not at any of his other premises. And I can't see there being any issues at these premises if the licence were to be granted. Now, the second topic on which I want to make some detailed points are vulnerability. Now, I, I want to point out that for the great majority of people, gambling is a harmless pastime. For a small minority, it's an addiction which harms them and it causes harm to those that are around them. The applicant accepts that, he understands that. Now, that's why Parliament have made one of the licensing objectives protecting vulnerable people from being harmed or exploited by gambling. Now, there are in place laws, regulations, rules by statute, through regulations, through licence conditions, the codes of practice, which are legally binding on all operators. And the Gambling Commission, as the regulator, has also set out guidance on how it expects operators to behave. For example, there has to be in place appropriate supervision of premises. In terms of the layout of premises, there has to be proper supervi-, there has to be line of sight usually, so that there can be proper supervision and it can be maintained. My client does all of that and more. He does it across his other venues, he's always done it across his other venues without any criticism. There is in place staff training. Staff members go through an induction process. They then go through refresher training. And that training includes responsible gambling, help for gamblers with problems, customer interaction, self-exclusion, intoxication and so forth. It also includes recognising signs of problem gambling, according to best practice and national expertise. Social responsibility messages are displayed in the premises, outside the premises. Inside the premises, there are customer posters and leaflets which deal with staying in control, which explain to customers that gambling is not an investment. If they're not enjoying it, they must stop. And provide signposting where assistance can be frowned in relation to problem gambling. There is documentation, stay in control documentation with contact details for GAM Care at the National Gambling Treatment Service, Be Gamble Aware. This is displayed prominently within his venues. And of course, there are social responsibility messages, and if this licence were to be granted, it would be displayed on the machines. I want to touch briefly on stakes and prize limits for machines in adult gaming centres. Now, these are set by Parliament, as I've already explained. This is unlike bets, unlike in betting offices, where there are no national limits. You can go into a betting shop and you can bet as much as you want. You can't do that in an adult gaming centre. You cannot bet more than two pound, that's the limit on a stake in an adult gaming centre. Two pound is different to a betting office where there is no limit at all. Now, there is something which the, what the Gambling Commission referred to as customer interaction. This is where staff at the premises would engage with customers if there was a problem, if they felt that a player was engaging in harmful gambling. And there's a difference between gambling which is compliant, which is allowed by law, and harmful gambling, which is what the licensing objectives seek to prevent. So the staff are trained to deal with customers by way of interaction if they feel there's harmful gambling. Now, this is a key part of the Gambling Commission's strategy to protect vulnerable people from being harmed or exploited by gambling. Staff are trained to look at various signs, for example, you know, a particular sign of problem gambling could be agitation, aggression, change of mood. And at that point, staff would intervene and interact with the customer. Now, that interaction could result in any number of potential outcomes. It might result, for example, in a referral to gambling assistance. It could result in a referral to a clinic or an advice agency. It could result in self-exclusion. It could result in exclusion, full stop. And my client has in place policies, procedures, systems and controls. For self-exclusion, there are digital devices in all the venues, so if a particular customer were to self-exclude in one of my client's venues, that would be circulated digitally to his other venues, so that that person, that customer, would not be allowed to come into any of his other venues. Just whilst on the topic of customer interactions and self-exclusion, these are documented, they're analysed by the management team. By law, my client has to file regulatory returns to the Gambling Commission annually. So there is regulatory oversight even on those issues of self-exclusion and customer interactions. I've already touched on test purchasing and mystery shopping. My client takes seriously his responsibilities in accordance with the law. He has taken seriously his responsibilities over a period of almost four decades. I, I've touched on this and I'll say it again, he's been granted a licence at every single premises that he has applied for because the applicant takes the utmost care and takes very seriously the way any particular, the way his operation is run. Now, I want to turn to the objections. And if I could make this point, we don't have any objections from any of the responsible authorities. We do have an objection from the Public Health Department, they are not one of the responsible authorities. And it's not the role of the Public Health Department to promote the licensing objectives. In my respectful submission, the objection does fail. It fails on the evidence, it fails on the guidance which licensing authorities issued by the Gambling Commission, and it fails on the law. You will recall, I started these submissions with the reference to section 153 of the Act, which says that a licensing authority shall aim to permit. So that's where we have to start, a presumption in favour of granting the licence. And in the absence of demonstrable evidence that the licensing objectives will be harmed, a licence should be granted. Now, I want to take point by point the objections, the representations that have been made by the Public Health Department. One of the objections is that people, the people that will be most negatively impacted are children and young adults and vulnerable people. Now, of course, that is an objection that could be put forward in any town, in any city centre. Which is why my client has safeguards in place. And I've gone through those safeguards in considerable detail. It's also said by the Department of Public Health in their representation that there are average levels of deprivation in Sheffield city centre. However, my client operates venues in areas where they are much more deprived, where there hasn't been any regulatory intervention as a result of the way he's operating those premises. And there hasn't been any suggestion by any licensing authority that the licensing objectives are being harmed in those other towns and cities. Now, the second point that's made by the Public Health Department is that if a licence is granted, the premises would likely lead to increased gambling activity with a high risk of harm. My respectful submission is there isn't any evidence of this. Will there be any harm to the licensing objectives? Is it the case that the licensing objectives will not be complied with or are unlikely to be complied with? Well, in my respectful submission, the evidence is to the contrary. And the reason I say that is none of the other gambling establishments, none of their licences have been subjected to review. The reasons they've not been subjected to review is because the licensing objectives are not being harmed in Sheffield. And they're not being harmed at my client's other premises, in other towns and cities. And the reason I say that is because he has tried and tested systems in place over a period of almost four decades at these other venues where there are higher levels of deprivation. I did write to the Public Health Department as well, just as I wrote to the Licensing Department and as I wrote to South Yorkshire Police. The position of the Public Health Department was that it's important that this is an issue which is considered by the Licensing Subcommittee. And I agree, it should be considered at committee. However, the decision has to be one that has to be made in accordance with the law as set out in statute. Now, the Public Health Department don't make any criticism of my client. They don't make any criticism of his operation, nor his other venues, nor his regulatory history, nor the significant number of proposed conditions. And trying to look at it objectively, what is their objection, what's their representation? And really, the, in my view, their objection seems to be that these premises would create problem gambling. Well, I disagree. Because if the other premises in Sheffield are not, if his other premises are not, then there isn't any evidence to say that this particular premises would. The final point that is relied upon by the director in written submissions is not a particularly good point. And he, the Public Health Department make the point that there are enough premises in Sheffield. Section 153 of the Act expressly states that demand is an irrelevant consideration. Whether or not there are enough premises is not the question for the Subcommittee today. Now, demand was a test a long, long time ago. From the 1960s up until 2006, when the Act came into place, the test was demand, and it's not demand now. The test is, can the licensing objectives be complied with? Will they be complied with? Is it the case that they are unlikely to be complied with? Now, demand and whether there are enough premises, whether there ought to be more premises, whether there ought to be less premises, is usually dealt with by way of a cumulative impact assessment. And councillors, you will be aware of those, because they are relevant in alcohol licensing. Not in this type of licensing. Now, of course, you may or you may not be aware that there is currently a white paper, there is a review at present, in which it is suggested that cumulative impact assessments will come into law. Now, that may happen, it may become law, it may not. But certainly the position in law at the moment is demand is not a question for the Licensing Subcommittee. Demand is not a test. There is not any cumulative impact assessment that needs to be carried out, nor is there any cumulative impact policy in place. Now, I raise that point because it is an objection which has been raised over and over again, certainly in the written, in the written representations, that there are plenty of other premises. Why do we need to have another one here? So, I just want to summarise the points that I've made. We have a mandatory test, which is a licensing authority shall aim to permit. The obligation is an aim to permit, where it's then broken down into A, B, C and D, if those conditions are met, and my submission is the conditions are met. There isn't any evidence before the committee to say the conditions are not met or are unlikely to be met. The aim to permit, I've already gone through with you the definition of that in Paterson's. There is a presumption in favour of granting the premises licence. Conditions should only be attached where it's necessary to do so. And even then, only those conditions which must be proportionate in the circumstances. They have to be relevant, they have to be directly related, they have to be fair and reasonable. The guidance to the committee, the guidance to local authorities rather, states any refusal should be for reasons which demonstrate, demonstrate by evidence. That the licensing objectives will not or are unlikely to be met. And that's in paragraph 5.34 from the guidance from the Gambling Commission. The guidance further goes on to say that the following considerations in law are irrelevant to the determination of an application for a premises licence. And I think this is particularly important. Because these are, the guidances, these are issues which are not relevant. A dislike of gambling, simply not relevant. A general notion that it is undesirable to allow gambling premises in an area, simply not relevant in law. Moral or ethical objections to gambling, again, not relevant in law. The demand for gambling premises, not relevant because section 153 of the Act says. Any objections which state that there are enough gambling establishments in a particular area, they may be, they may be relevant to planning considerations, but they're not relevant to licensing. Further, planning considerations are not relevant to your decision today. Now, councillors, you will recall, there was a particular representation which was, I believe it was by the Reverend in relation to a planning objection. Now, he did say that things have moved on, however, in my respectful submission, that was always a planning objection. It remains now a planning objection. So, I would say our position, the applicant's position can be summarised as follows. He's a highly competent operator. He has an unblemished trading history over forty years. He's regulated by the Gambling Commission. He has established policies, procedures, systems, controls in place. Audits, staff training, he has a management team in place, all in furtherance of protection and promotion of the licensing objectives. He has nine other premises in other towns and cities, some of which have areas of greater deprivation, higher crime rates, and where there is the presence of greater numbers of vulnerable persons. Despite operating in such challenging environments, the applicant has never experienced a review or a complaint from any of the, of the relevant responsible authorities. There isn't any evidence before the Licensing Subcommittee today that the applicant has failed to promote the licensing objectives at any of his other premises. Due to the nature of these premises, the customer demographic, fifty percent male to fifty percent female, the age of the customers, the low number of the customers that are in at any particular point, the quality of the management team, means that any issues in relation to crime and disorder are unlikely. Now, if this application is successful, the applicant will be subject to strict regulatory requirements, and I've already touched on what those are. On submission of the paper application in August, a risk assessment was submitted. It wasn't a particularly lengthy one, I think it ran to about three pages. Now, following receipt of the representations around four weeks ago, the applicant has conducted a further risk assessment. It's a very detailed risk assessment, it appears in the bundle, I believe it runs to some twelve pages. It deals with all of the issues that have been identified and highlighted in the representations. And as a result of that risk assessment, we have proposed, I would say around thirty-five conditions. Others would say there's perhaps twenty-three conditions, it depends on how you break them down. For example, in relation to CCTV, there's some ten conditions. It could be said that that's actually one condition, and there are actually subparts of that one condition. But certainly, we have proposed a significant number of conditions. And if this licence were to be granted, it would be the most conditioned licence in the applicant's estate. None of his other licences have conditions such as those that have been proposed. Now, in the unlikely event of any regulatory issue being raised, if this licence were to be granted, the applicant would, as a matter of course, and without delay, liaise with the relevant authorities to ensure that any issue is resolved promptly and effectively. Finally, if I could say this, and if I could take you back to where I started these submissions, and that was section 153 of the Act. There is an aim to permit. Will there be breaches and harm? Well, that's the question for the Subcommittee. Is there evidence that the grant of these, is there evidence before the Subcommittee that the grant of this application at these premises to this operator will generate crime and disorder? Which is more than just nuisance, because the Gambling Commission deals with nuisance. Or will it result in gambling which is not fair? Or will it result in harm and exploitation of children and vulnerable people? My respectful submission is, it will not. And I believe I can say this because of his history, regulatory history, and all the other points that I've made. And if I could clause by saying this, we have proposed conditions. If the Subcommittee is of the view that there ought to be further conditions, we are open to further conditions. My client does have the resources in place to comply with conditions, to deal with any issues that might be identified. And he doesn't want to be anything other than a model operator here in Sheffield, just like his other premises, where he's a model operator in those other towns and cities. Thank you very much for listening to me. And of course, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have for me. I'm sorry that I have gone on for so long. However, I felt it was important, certainly in relation to the law, that I lever some of those points.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Suzyza, for that very comprehensive representation. I will open it to questions to my colleagues if there are any questions. Constable Horner.
You've obviously looked at, you've selected these premises. And you will have heard from other representations, that the representations, it could be argued, were simply about the location of these premises. Does that not make you want to think about whether this is the right premise for your, place for your operation? Because it would seem, you could argue, that if you came back with a different application for a different place, it would be difficult to be refused since the only objections have been about the location. That's my first question.
Constable, thank you. I just want to, I just want to refer myself to a particular point. Whilst answering your question, I just want to make reference to a particular point, and I'm just looking for it. It may come back to me. Yes, there are representations about the location. However, in my respectful submission, though, and the applicant respects all representations. He entirely, entirely respects them, he understands them. And he has gone to some effort to engage with all those that have made representations. We wrote to everybody to try and meet liaises and find some common ground. We didn't get a response from anybody other than South Yorkshire Police or the Public Health Department. But going back to your question, is it the case that these premises are in the wrong place? Well, in my respectful submission, the Act expressly deals with that being an issue which is not relevant in law. And that's what I was trying to find, so I could, if I could refer you to it. The representation or the objection that this is the wrong area is not made out in law. And it's dealt with in the written submissions. I dealt with it in my opening submissions, and I will try and find it again. So, yes, we respect that view. However, Parliament in statute has set out that it's not a relevant objection when determining this application.
I think, if I may not to put words in Constable Horner's mouth, I think, given that the majority of the representations focused on the fact that it may be unsuitable in light of children, young people... in light of children, young people and vulnerable people in the area, if you could potentially set out, because that does relate to the licensing objectives, which is the point you've sort of continued to hammer, so how would it be in that sense?
I take that point, and that's why, having received those representations, the applicant has gone to the trouble of preparing a further local area risk assessment, looking at all of those issues which have been raised. It's a particularly lengthy document, if I could take you to it in our bundle, it's at pages seventy-four to eighty-five. So, they do make representations about it's the wrong location, references made to children and vulnerable people. All of that is taken on board, that risk assessment was prepared, and as a result of that risk assessment, we have come up, we have proposed a significant number of conditions to deal with the concerns that have been raised and the representations that have been made. And of course, that's the purpose of a risk assessment, to look at the risk, because the applicant accepts that there is risk, of course there is risk. Statute makes reference to risk, which is, and local policy makes reference to risk, which is why we are required to complete a local area risk assessment. So where representations are made, where concerns are raised, we deal with it by way of a local area risk assessment, and that risk assessment here has translated into a significant number of conditions to deal with those concerns and those risks which have been identified. So I hope that answers your question in terms of, these are the representations that are being made, these are the objections that are being made, what are your thoughts on that? Well, our thoughts are, we've prepared a detailed local area risk assessment in response to those objections, with respect to those objections and concerns, and it's translated to a significant number of conditions that the applicant is prepared to comply with.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay. councillor Davidson.
In your submission, you said that places would not be immediately, let me see, recognisable, I think probably is the word, to people who don't gamble. So, can you tell me what the premises would actually look like, and how you propose to black them out? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think the point you refer to is when I say that children would not be able to see into the premises.
Also, so, if I was not a gambler, and I, could I walk past that place and not even know it was there? What it was, I mean.
Quite possibly. If I could take you to page seventy-two of our bundle. And I'm hoping on page seventy-two, you can see quite a large stone building, it is in black and white. Now, I think that's probably, so we have those entrance doors, those are the applicant's premises in Leeds city centre.
It looks like a bank, which is probably what it was.
Correct, absolutely. So, those doors, if anybody were to walk past those doors, and if they were to look into the premises, they would see, if I could ask you to turn over onto page seventy-three, they would see a foyer. So they would not see into the premises, they would see a foyer, and to get into the premises, they would have to turn, they would have to go inside, and they'd have to either take a left, or they would have to take a right to get into the premises. So, on walking past the premises, if they were to look in, they simply see a foyer, they cannot see into the premises.
Yeah, but actually, it's got a large window display into Chapel Walk. Certainly, I mean, it's not anywhere, it's not anything like that building, for example, which I could confuse for, you know, I may think, oh, that's a bank, and just walk past it. But this is an old shop, and it's, it's got a display area which faces Fargate, which is fairly narrow, and that's the sort of area you were describing. But onto Chapel Walk, there's quite a large display area where, you know, it would have displayed whatever goods they were selling. So how are you proposing to make sure that particular area down Chapel Walk looks good, but at the same time, not tempting for those who are vulnerable or don't want to go in?
Would you allow me just a moment to take some brief instruction? The applicant would not take any issue if you were to impose a condition that there is not to be any advertising down the side of Chapel Walk.
Okay, so what would you put on the front then? How would you attract people in that way?
Apologies, councillor, your question was, what would we put on the front? Probably a retail display. And when I say a retail display, a good number of the applicant's premises have items which are, if I could describe them as porcelain items, large urns, vases, pleasing to the eye, nothing to do with gambling. And if the concern of the Subcommittee was that there ought to be a retail display, in fact, in fact, there has been some mention of an active retail display, I can tell you I have instructions from the applicant that a retail display along the front of the premises in those large windows would not be an issue for the applicant if it allays the concerns of the Subcommittee.
Okay, but people might think that that's what the premises were about, if you put a retail display.
I agree, they may, however, if they were to see urns or vases, and they thought that it's a store that sells urns or vases, they would of course look up and see the sign, and it would say Royal Amusement, and they would realise that it doesn't sell urns and vases, that it is an amusement arcade.
Okay, right, the other question, if I may, Chair, is about the two pound. Is that two pound a time, or two pound for the whole visit?
That's two pound a time. If I could just add to that point, you can also play for ten pence a time, or twenty pence a time.
If your maximum is two pound.
But the maximum is two pound. And the point I was making is that is very much different. And that's, of course, a stake that has been set by Parliament. But of course, that's different to betting premises, where you can bet as much as you like.
So I gather that's two pound per visit, is that?
Sorry.
Is that two pound per visit?
No, no. The maximum stake at any one time is no more than two pound.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. councillor Horner.
councillor Davidson's largely covered the question I was going to ask, but just to come back to it, because of the issue about having the frontage down the side, and the questions that have been raised about it, you're absolutely saying that you will not have any wording on that, you're quite happy for that to be just black glass or whatever it might, or whether it be some kind of display or whatever.
Well, councillor, not only am I saying we're happy, I'm saying that the applicant is happy for a condition on his licence for there to be no advertising of gambling in those glass windows. So it's not just me saying, I'm inviting the committee to make a condition on his licence that on those large glass windows, there is to be no advertising of gambling.
That's fine, you've answered my question.
Okay, thank you. No more questions from my colleagues, I don't have any questions. I am going to open to questions from other parties. Oh, sorry. Sam? Yes, sorry, just one second.
I've jumped the gun, sorry.
I think I need to advise him I have a question. We'll bring you in afterwards.
I may have a couple, I apologise. So firstly, actually, I probably will, while we're still on the point of being able to view into the premises, happy for a condition to be no advertising, but will people be able to look in and see gaming machines? I may have missed that while I was outside, apologies.
Can I just deal with that point and break it down? So when we say no advertising, I take it you're not saying that my client can't have a signboard outside his premises? Because of course, every establishment has a signboard, we're talking about those large glass windows, so I'd like to think that we're talking about those large glass windows, rather than you're not allowed to have a signboard.
Yeah, so my point being, can people sort of walk past the glass windows, look in, and essentially see what the premises looks like?
Absolutely not.
Right, okay. So it's sort of be frosted or papered or?
If I could take you to page seventy of the bundle.
Yeah, okay.
Can you see, we have, the applicant has premises where those large display windows are very much like, if you could call it a vinyl sticker. So you can't see in through the windows, and through the doorway, you can only see into the foyer.
Yeah, I think just with this premises sort of having the two, it's got the big, sort of, it's a long premises, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Trying to spit out there. That's great, thank you. You mentioned before, staff policies and procedures in place, so if there are potentially people trying to gain access, either children or problem people, that staff refuse it, they note it. Obviously, you know, we have got incidents where people can be incredibly persistent, how is that dealt with? I mean, it's all well and good sort of saying entries refused and noting it in an incident, but in practice, how would that actually look?
Ordinarily, if we had, if the applicant had a young person trying to come into the premises, they operate a policy, a challenge twenty-five policy, well, that's certainly the intention here in Sheffield, I believe the policy's called something slightly different at the other premises, they would be challenged, and they would be asked to provide identification, but your question is, how would that be enforced? My understanding is, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong by way of further instructions, over the last forty years, the applicant hasn't had young people that are insisting on coming into these premises, who, where the police have had to be called to remove someone from the premises. It hasn't happened, and we can't see it happening here. At none of my client's premises does he have any SIA staff, those are Security Industry Authority staff, effectively doormen or bouncers that you'd have at a nightclub, or a public house, preventing entry, he doesn't have them at his premises. In fact, I'm not aware of any adult gaming centres that have SIA staff or bouncers to deal with those types of issues.
Okay, and staff training, you've got induction and refresher, how often's the refresher training done?
The refresher training is every six months.
Okay, thank you. So in the original application, I appreciate that an updated local area risk assessment's been submitted, but originally, and it's on page five of the report, it stated no risks associated with vulnerable people. I'm just wondering, did the applicant consider the local area vicinity before submitting the application for this particular premises?
He did, and at that time, he was of the view that there wasn't any particular risk with vulnerable people, more so than the risk of vulnerable people at his other premises in West Yorkshire and Greater Manchester, where there's higher levels of deprivation, higher levels of crime, and it's a fairly bog standard risk assessment that was used. But of course, on receipt of the representations, it has been updated, and it's been updated thoroughly.
And it's your submission that the application is consistent with the licensing objectives, so you've taken us through those, which has been a big help. Is it also your submission that it's consistent with the council's statement of licensing policy, in particular, the local area and the risks identified? I think it was Mr Seffnor, councillor Johnson, that said at five point two in terms of the risk in the local area.
It certainly is my submission that the application is in accordance with the licensing objectives and in accordance with any policy. If anybody were to raise a particular point in policy where they say it's not in compliance, I'll respond to that particular point. I believe that point that was made was a very generalised point, rather than reference to a specific policy that we are not in compliance with.
I think it was more generally, there's not been a great deal of reference, I think there was only Mr Edge, actually, through the documents in the original and the additional bundle, that actually referenced our policy. So yeah, that's helpful, thank you. You say there's no demonstrable evidence that the objectives have been harmed, or will be undermined, or unlikely to be complied with, and you say there's been a lack of evidence from people speaking today, which would slightly disagree with, but I just wondered what evidence you had to support your case that the applicant has been a responsible operator. I know you've said there haven't been reviews or intervention, but in terms of statements from other local authorities, or local policing forces, or other public health organisations, things like that?
The fact that he has operated over such a lengthy period of time across a breadth of different local authorities, where there haven't been any complaints by any of the responsible authorities, there haven't been any licensing reviews, there haven't been any, and I'm not talking about a successful review, I'm talking about there has not been any application for a review, there has not been any application for a revocation of the existing licences over that forty-year period. So it's not the case that there's been an application and it's been defended successfully, there has not been an application for a review, there has not been an application for a revocation. And that's why I say, we have evidence that the licensing objectives have been complied with, will be complied with, and on the, to the contrary, that there isn't evidence that they will not be complied with.
And I wondered if I could just clarify in terms of Mr Edge's statement, I wasn't quite sure the times that you'd carried out your observations on Fargate. You sort of mentioned mid-morning to early evening, but then when you refer to the Wakefield premises, you're there at four PM, so I just wondered sort of how long.
So I was actually staying, I carried out.
Can I use the mic, please, Mr Edge?
Yeah, so I visited the area Friday and Saturday, and therefore stayed in the Premier Inn in the city centre that night. So I actually went to Fargate in the morning, then again in the afternoon, went to, sorry, what was the second one? Kirkgate in Wakefield, and then prior to returning to the hotel, went back to Fargate again to look at it during the evening, before the next day, I then went to Leeds. Thank you.
Just getting myself in a bit of a model with that one when I was reading it. I'm nearly done. In terms of you say in your bundle that with betting offices, there are often people loitering around, there's- there are often people loitering around, there's a sort of misconception that people have around them, and that it does attract vulnerable people, and that people often place adult gaming centres in the same capacity, so that misconception sort of across all types of gambling. So how then does this particular premises address that concern if, you know, regular Joe Public doesn't know the difference between an A G C and a betting office? How is that managed if people are going to have that presumption anyway?
With respect, it's not regular Joe Public that the, those who have made representations are concerned about. Perhaps they could be described as not regular Joe Public who are causing trouble. And in my respectful submission, those individuals who are trouble causes would know full well this is not a betting shop, that they're not welcome, that their custom would not be welcome. And so those people would not be interested in coming into these premises. In fact, my client is not interested in their custom and would take steps to prevent those types of persons coming into his premises. Those are the steps he takes at his other premises, because the vast majority of those who use his premises are of an older age, with the fifty percent male, fifty percent female demographic. And the types of people that are described as, if I could call them trouble causes, would cause problems for my client's business if he allowed them to come into the premises. He doesn't want them in, he would not allow them in. He'd take steps to make sure that they don't come in by refusing entry.
I'll leave that chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have questions from there.
Yes, thank you. Just to remind you, Reverend Jonathan Hague, Victoria Hall Methodist Church. You've spoken very eloquently, thank you, and clinically about the law, and I completely understand that this is a licensing application. But I would also suggest that if you didn't have the licensing application, you wouldn't necessarily want to start this business in this place anyway. It's one thing to say though, lawfully, wouldn't you agree, that this licence can be given, which you've clearly shown, but does that mean that it should be given? And that's the first question. The second follow-up to that is, obviously, you have done a lot of work and you know the story of Sheffield and its current development. You know about the business plan and the vision of Fargate and Chapel Walk. So I just wondered what the value added to the entertainment and to the vision plan and the mission plan of that place. I'll take away the word mission plan, sorry, that's another job I do. The market, the market plan about how they want the ambience of the place to be. I'm very excited about what the council are looking to do, particularly thinking about the fact that Chapel Walk, the amount of money which you will know about is going to be invested on Chapel Walk. I'm sure you can tell me what that amount is. It's going to be all about uniformity of the lighting and the signage and the windows, bringing that all back up to how it used to be. So I just wondered whether you think that there's going to be a value added to that in what you're suggesting to do.
Thank you. I do believe my client's premises add value in every town and city centre that they're in. If I could just deal with your first question, which was, in law, the licence should be granted. Sorry, I think the question was, the law will allow the licence to be granted, but should it be granted? Which suggests to me that's a moral question, should this licence be granted? And of course, statute does not permit the committee to deal with a moral objection or look at this from a moral point of view. Statute sets out, section one five three of the Act, sets out that moral objections are not not to be taken into account, they are not relevant. That's what the law says, that's what Parliament has intended. And of course, it may be that representations will be made to Parliament on this issue. But that's what the law states at the moment, that's what statute says, and that's the position. I don't think I can add anything to that.
I just wonder about the, I was also referring to the fact that, like I said, you quite clinically spoke about this, but about how it all fits in with the vision and the plan of the development of Fargate, which is very exciting, and Chapel Walk, which is going to restore it to its former glory. I just wondered whether, that's when I was asking the question, should it be done? Whether that has been explored and studied by your client to make sure that that would certainly add value. I'm not just talking about financial value, but value as a venue and a place of welcome, not just to the residents who are moving in, but also to visitors. We're right next to the cultural quarter of the city, as you will well know as well, and does it fit into all of that plan? I think that's the end of my question.
The applicant's position is that it does.
Okay, thank you. I'll just finish. Any further questions from any of the parties, Peter? Use the mic, please.
Thank you very much, sorry. The first question is, you made some very sweeping statements in your longer explanation of the reasons why this application should be accepted. And one of those statements was, we approached all the objectors, we approached all the objectors. Changing Sheffield hasn't had no approach, so when was that approach made to us as an objective?
Mr Edge, who sits just to the end, drafted a letter which was sent in by email. It was forwarded to the licensing department, who informed me that it had been forwarded to all the objectors. I looked towards Miss Finch, if she can remember, I did send in an email, I'm sure I got an email back to say, thank you, we have forwarded that on to all those that have made representations.
Yes, it was sent on Friday the twentieth of October to all parties.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay.
Can this be forwarded to all those who have objected to the application? Sent by email via the licensing, via licensing at the licensing authority, to be forwarded by the licensing authority. And I too got an email back saying that it had been forwarded to all those who'd objected.
Thank you. Next question. Constable Horner alluded to the point I'm going to make here and the question I'm going to ask you. All the evidence by the applicant is based on us objecting to having a gambling outlet. And you mentioned the objections being on a moral basis. You actually specifically used the word, the objections are on a moral basis. My objection, what I said was, it was all about the location of the venue. There was no moral aspects in my objection, or our objection of the residents. So you've been turning this round into us objecting to the principle of having a gaming outlet. But we actually didn't make that point, we made the point about where you're having the gaming outlet. If you applied to put it somewhere else, we would have no problems with that, it's the position that was the problem. So why were you implying that this was a moral objection on our behalf? Because I didn't hear any of that.
If I have suggested it's a moral objection for that particular representation, then I apologise, I don't believe I have. But I did also make the representation, I made the submission, that any representation that a licence shouldn't be granted in a particular area is not one that should be taken into account. The guidance to licensing authorities by the Gambling Commission specifically deals with that point, where it says that they should not take into account the suggestion that it's the wrong area. And from the sounds of it, what you're saying is, this is the wrong area. It would be all right in another part of the city centre, just not here. I hear you, however, the guidance from the Gambling Commission to the local authority is that that is not a relevant consideration under this particular framework in the granting of the licence.
Thank you. Next question, we've got two more, very quick. You said that CCTV cameras monitor the outside of the premises. What action does the applicant take if people are seen to congregate outside the premises?
It's not an issue that the applicant has faced at any of his other premises, where there's been congregations of people outside his premises. However, it's a question on which I did take instructions over the weekend. And the only thing that the applicant's staff could do is ask those people to disperse, no different to staff in McDonald's or Burger King asking crowds to disperse. But there isn't any reason for crowds to gather outside the applicant's premises, because it doesn't attract that crowd, that particular type of clientele.
Okay, thank you. Last question then, Chair. We've just heard that there's no reason for crowds to congregate outside. One of the questions that was asked of me earlier on, where did I get my evidence from for a five hundred pound daily prize? Which to us is the magnet that draws in the kind of people that we're trying to move away from that area. And the answer is, presumably, is the Royal Amusements website, royal-amusements.co.uk. Five hundred pound daily prize. That's what it says on the website. Now that to us is the magnet that draws these people towards you and the kind of people that we're trying to pull away from those areas. So there's the evidence on your own website.
The applicant doesn't offer a five hundred pound daily prize, it's obviously an error on the website.
I find that very hard to believe. Here we are, there's the website. Five hundred pound jackpots every day, it says on the website.
The reference to that is the five hundred pound jackpot. It doesn't mean that five hundred pounds is given away every day. That's not a promotion that the applicant offers. However, there are machines which have a maximum prize of five hundred pound. It's not the case that five hundred pound is given away every day.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thanks for your patience in listening to four hours of testimony on behalf of the objectors and the applicant. I'm afraid to say also that on the website, if you look at, if you Google it, all the news outlets are saying there's a five hundred pound daily prize, so it's obviously got through from the website for the applicant websites for the news outlets that are advertising product in Sheffield.
Okay, thank you. Constable Harrison, one final question, make it a short one, please.
Thank you very much. One of the things that might be important is this question of exclusions. And how does this operate? Are they given a suspension of time, and what percentage are actually excluded?
Would you allow me a moment to take some instructions? The document I have before me, the Policies and Procedures Manual, there is a self-exclusion request form, which is for a minimum period of six months. It does say in brackets, no more than twelve months, however, I have instructions that those who say they never want to come in again can sign a lifetime exclusion.
And that's the one, that's the one that gets the photograph forward and sent round to every...
And that's... That is circulated digitally to all of the applicant's other venues. So if it's the case that... It's circulated amongst the applicant's premises, and I'm told that if there are other operators that use that same system, it goes to those operators as well.
Okay, thank you for that. End of questions. I will give you a couple of minutes just to sum up if you think you need to sum up, or anything else that you want to do, to add.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think there's anything else I can usefully add. I've made all the points that I have. I don't think there's anything else I can usefully add, other than the test from Parliament is clear. And the, I've set it out, I don't think there's any merit in repeating it.
That's fine, thank you very much for that. Okay, so finally then, just asking the licences officer to give us the options.
Thank you, Chair. The options open to the committee are, one, to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, two, to grant the premises licence with conditions, and three, to reject the application. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we will now ask you to leave the room, and obviously we'll deliberate, come to a decision, and obviously we'll let you know what the decision is.
Thank you.
Go to private session, thank you.
Coming this morning and making your presentation, as you can see, we've deliberated quite at length. And we have come to a decision, which you can let you know now, so we don't think that to grant the licence would be reasonably consistent with the licensing objectives, mainly protecting children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or being exploited by gambling, and preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder. And also, we don't feel that to grant the licence would be in accordance with the council's statement of licensing policy. And we therefore refuse to grant this licence.
Just to follow on from that, as you probably know, so that you do have the right of appeal against that decision, so that's within twenty-one days to the magistrate's court. So following this hearing, I'll draft a notice that will be circulated to all parties that have been involved, that'll just set out the evidence considered and how members came to the decision. So that would be the notice you would use, should you wish to lodge your appeal with court.
Can I just ask for clarification?
So namely, in terms of the location and the risk and the management of the risk. Obviously, further details will follow in writing, I appreciate you do need those.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll say, thank you.
Thank you all for your time today, I appreciate it's been a long and cold day, but thank you, it's appreciated.